Doing, you know what it should be doing? Well, I'll share, I'll share my screen.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for February 18th and also the Finance Committee is here and we have the School Committee here. Thank you. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lynn, do we have any announcements?
Uh, we do. Does Debbie, do you usually do this one? Do you even announce them or?
No, you get to do it.
Okay. Uh, okay, so, um, the annual town meeting recognition list, each year during annual town meeting, the Select Board gives thanks and recognition to those people who have served in various town departments or on town boards and committees. This year's annual town meeting will be held on March, uh, May 12th, 2020. Please submit the list of those employees or volunteers from your department, board, or committee who no longer serve the town. This recognition would include anyone who was not recognized at last year's annual town meeting. Uh, last year's list is attached here to this memo for reference. Please submit the names and years of service to Debbie House, at D House at Longmeadow.org, no later than Monday, April 27th. And this memo is available on the town website with the accompanying, um, list of those from last year. One second.
And I think you've noticed, what she's done is embedded all of the, um, our packet into the agenda, so it's easier for citizens to see what we're getting in our packets and review it also during our meetings.
Yes, if I could just get this little thing to go away. There we go. Okay. So then the other announcements are, again, the open space and recreation plan, uh, has a public survey that's available. This launched January 22nd. Resident input is critical, so we're just asking people to take that survey. The link is available here on this announcement or, um, in multiple places on the town website. Uh, the presidential primary is March 3rd. Absentee ballots are available and early voting starts next week. All of the, uh, early voting times are available right on the homepage of the town website, but also embedded here, but it's pretty much all week next week, eight to five, with extended hours on Tuesday, the 25th. And that will take place in the rear auditorium at the Community House. And a reminder that excise tax bills were mailed out and payment is due March 1st. You can pay online, in person, or, uh, mail your payment in. You can also use the Dropbox at Town Hall. And that's it for announcements.
And you mentioned Citizen of the Year?
Um, is that there?
Yeah, I think it was the second one.
Oh, there we go. Uh, so Citizen of the Year. Long Meadow Select Board is accepting nominations for annual Citizen of the Year award. Recep- uh, the recipient will be announced at annual town meeting, May 12th. And letters of nomination should be mailed to the Select Board's office or emailed to Debbie House by Wednesday, April 15th.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements from the Select Board? No? Okay. All right, and I guess in March, we also, beginning in March, those who have businesses in town, the property lists are due to the assessors. And, um, I think all of the dog licenses are coming up too, so check the website. All right, any, um, resident comments? Uh, Select Board comments? No? Okay. Well, it's a really busy meeting. Uh, we're, we're sort of kicking off our, our review and preparation of the budget, so that's why we've invited Finance Committee here. And, uh, we're gonna have presentations tonight from School Committee, Capital Planning, and Community Preservation. And the other two will be maybe later in the meeting. There were other meetings they had to attend first. So, uh, we'll start with the School Committee. You're coming in with the budget. Thank you very much.
And Marty will be here any minute, so.
Okay.
Do you want me to disconnect? And do you want me to change the input?
So at our last meeting last week, the Long Meadow School Committee, uh, voted upon a budget, uh, after much deliberation, going through our Finance Subcommittee, meet meetings with Tom and Lynn and Marty and, uh, Paul, um, to come up with, we think, is a budget that takes into account the needs of the town's financial constraints while at the same time meets the learning goals of the district. So, we're looking at the FY '21 budget targets and then looking, looking at those budgetary targets. This calls for an Invest in Safety and Student Support.
Armin, could you just put the microphone a little closer, just in case they had trouble hearing you at home. Thanks.
I know. My voice is kinda meek, so.
Perfect timing.
Uh, the budget responds to some enrollment shifts that we're seeing, uh, especially, we have received lots of feedback from parents at, uh, Blueberry, uh, in regards to growing class sizes at the second, at the rising second, uh, rising third graders, uh, Center School as well in two grades, the rising third graders, rising fifth graders, or rising fourth graders to, yeah, rising fifth graders, uh, and, uh, at Williams Middle School. Uh, it moves the LPS towards a broader renewed vision of student success. What is student success beyond, uh, looking purely at grades? Uh, and what does the whole, uh, child, uh, need to, to grow? And how can we, uh, expand upon that to take advantage? And Marty was, uh, just, uh, asked to be part of a, a, a program that the School Committee, uh, sanctioned, uh, where we're taking a different look at, um, student performance against, uh, real life skills in some of the topics as opposed to just purely MCAS. So, MCAS will still be a component of it, but it won't be 100% MCAS. It'll be partially MCAS, partially real life skills. Um, it addresses, uh, you know, the district goals that have been set by the School Committee. Uh, we think it's cost-effective, sustainable. Uh, we have, uh, taken a look at where we can, uh, take positions, uh, out. Uh, we have tried to be as, uh, cost-conscious as we are and, uh, again, attentive to class size, and I will hand over to you.
Thank you. Uh, my apologies, Seth, for, for skating in here, uh, at the last minute. Thank you. So this is at the, at the highest level, uh, the, the summary that, um, represents the general fund, uh, submission. So as you see, this is, uh, an $874,000 request over FY '20. That increase is offset by a decrease in special revenue that we're anticipating, uh, mostly in the area of Title I, which we'll show you in some more detail. And so, uh, in the net effect of this is that the total expenditures in this budget submission is $706,000 over FY '20. Uh, this was a, a slide that was requested by the School Committee and it gives some historical perspective noting the, uh, how that general fund increases stacks up to past years and how the total budget increase stacks up to past years and, and notably, it shows the, uh, the percentage change, uh, in each of those two categories. Uh, and so you'll see that the, the, the overall budget increase is, uh, 1.89% over FY '20. Uh, the general fund increase is above that at 2.59% increase. And, uh, looking at the, the various revenue sources, you can see that we're, we're largely dependent on the, on the general fund. I think we, um, I've made my tours around the schools and talked to school staff about, um, some of the constraints and challenges that the town is facing, and I know Armin mentioned it earlier on, that, um, we tried to convey that to, uh, the administrative team. We've tried to convey it to stakeholders that, uh, kind of recognizing some of the fiscal constraints and challenges that the town is facing. And yet we know that we're, we're largely, uh, dependent on that general fund and, and we recognize that the, the town funds, uh, the School Department at uh, well beyond that, uh, minimum amount required by the, the foundation budget formula that you're increasingly familiar with. So, you'll see the, uh, the, the revenue sources, you'll note that the, the regular education grant, uh, about the fifth line down, shows an anticipated uh, decrease in the FY '21 budget. Again, that relates to, uh, a Title I, uh, federal grant that we're anticipating a downturn in, uh, in the amount of about $135,000. We can come back to any slides if you have any questions at some point. So this is, uh, sort of where the, the rubber hits the road and you'll note on the left side, uh, the, uh, the various reductions that we're anticipating and the overall increases. I draw your, um, attention to the top right, uh, which shows the, the contractual obligations that we can expect based on the staffing levels that we are, uh, projecting for FY '21. So, uh, that alone is a, a $902,000 obligation, again, based on the, the staffing arrangement that we have, uh, recommended to the School Committee. On the left side, you'll notice that, uh, one of the more favorable things that broke in our way was attrition. These are, um, this is, uh, savings that we can anticipate as, uh, more senior staff retire and will likely be hired by, uh, uh, newer staff that are lower on the salary schedule. We can, the next couple of slides get into some of the, the items that are on that chart and, and again, we can come back to any slide that would be helpful. I wanna go back to some of the targets that we had identified in the earlier slides and I wanna sort of hopefully demonstrate the connection between the proposed budget and some of the district improvement goals, and I think you can click through a couple of slides there, Tom. And so, noting, um, you can go right to the end, I guess. Noting on the left, some of the things that have been important to us as a, as a school department. Uh, obviously student safety being at the top of the list. We've, uh, tried to make a commitment to being culturally responsive in our practice, to making sure that we're responsive to the individual identities of all students. And then, when we talk about tiered systems of support, essentially it means that we're trying to establish a, a continuum of supports that uh, support the learning and growth of all students, whether it's, uh, tier one interventions at the classroom level, tier two, which is sort of short, pull-out, targeted instruction, tier three is more intensive support. So we want that full range of supports. And on the right, I'd call your attention at the top right there to the, uh, introduction of a licensed practical nursing position. This is a position that would be located here at the high school. We anticipate that it would serve the needs of students across the district. Uh, we talked about the academic needs of students, uh, being on the rise, but certainly their, their health needs are growing as well. And we wanna make sure that we're supporting those needs and supporting the, uh, the needs of our nursing staff. A couple of the items on the right, few of the items on the right are really budget-neutral items. Uh, and so I'll, I'll sorta, I won't spend too, too much time on those, but I should note that the, the center link classroom, that is a, uh, program to support students who have been, uh, diagnosed with autism and other similar behaviors. It's a program that's currently in place at Center School. It simply needs to be reflected properly in the FY '21 budget. And despite the projected Title I reduction that I mentioned, we think that there's some important positions that had been funded by that grant, and those are some positions that will need to be taken on by the, the general operating budget. Worth noting, um, just wanna linger on the, the cybersecurity, uh, item. Uh, we think that's an item that will benefit, uh, all towns, or all, the whole town and all departments, um, specifically backup to, uh, the Munis software, uh, some malware software. You know, you understand, obviously, that IT, um, uh, the IT budget is, resides within the school budget. And so we wanted to make sure that we accounted for that. That was about a $50,000, uh, increase in the FY '21 budget. I wanna thank, uh, Nick George, our tech director, for, you know, making sure that we were attentive to that.
Yeah, Marty, just, you mentioned culturally responsive practices, and then on the bottom you have something about grants. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. We've, uh, this is something that I, I think is, is increasingly important to, uh, this community. We, we, you know, certainly hear it from a lot of stakeholders that we, uh, wanna be sure that we are being attentive to the, um, to the, um, serving students equitably and being attentive to the diverse needs of all students. So we recently, um, inked a contract with an organization called the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. And that organization is out of Rhode Island, and we hope that they will, uh, engage stakeholders across the Long Meadow community in conversations about how we can more equitably serve all learners, how we can be more inclusive in our practice, how we can respond to the, the diverse needs and backgrounds of all students. They'll do some data disaggregation with us and ultimately come up with, um, maybe a recommend, series of recommendations on, on how we can achieve our goals in that area. So, it's a, it's, it's a matter of being targeted with some, uh, Title II grant funds. But appreciate you checking in on that.
Yeah, uh, let me just expound on the cybersecurity place, cause that's not just one thing. It's a series of three different things. It's cybersecurity, which we've identified, uh, as a town, being important across the town to make sure we're protecting all of our assets. It's two, was Munis, it's not replacing Munis with a cloud-based system, but it is putting Munis on a cloud-based backup on a regular schedule. Uh, so if something was to happen, we'd be able to come back up pretty quickly. Uh, and the third thing is that there was some software identified on the town side that was no longer meeting the needs of the town, so they're going to a different software, which is cloud-based and, uh, is part of, part of that. Uh, Nick, as well, the Technology Director, has done some really good work around working with our insurance company and looking for grants out in the, the, the marketplace as well, and he's already started to do some phishing tests, uh, with many users in town. I know, uh, at least with the schools, cause I got them as well. Um, and, uh, and so, uh, definitely on the radar and, and a little bit more emphasis than we were expecting this year, but money well worth it.
Thank you. And then the next slide, and you can click right through this, Tom. Just bring us to the end of it. So again, on the left, trying to show the linkage between the allocation, uh, between the budget and the goals on the left. And, uh, I wanna highlight a few important components of the budget, one being the, um, high school career development opportunities. This budget proposes the introduction of a career coordinator, uh, at Long Meadow High School. And that position is created by, uh, not replacing a, another position, uh, that is, um, is facing a retirement. So we think that this is a, a real important growth area for this learning community. We think giving kids the opportunities to be involved in, uh, sort of work-based learning situations where they can pursue internships, job shadowing, mock interviews, career awareness activities. There's a range of things that I think, um, we can, we can jump in on, uh, with this position, so we're really excited about it.
Sorry to keep bothering you. Will that include vocational testing?
So our, our vocational, um, services are largely provided by the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, LPVEC. We send, um, you know, a couple, well, about 16 students this year, go over to Career Tech over in Brush Hill and West Springfield. But that's not to say that this position couldn't help kids become more aware of opportunities in those fields. So expose them to industry opportunities that might use vocational skills, so. So I, I wouldn't oversell it in terms of it being very specific around vocational technical skills that kids get at LPVEC, but it definitely would help build awareness in those areas.
Yeah, and I would, Tom, I would respond that that's pretty important for a lot of us, the practical skill that may be applicable for somebody who's not on a college track.
Yeah.
So all of our eighth graders go over to Career Tech, uh, in the spring, and then they find out all the programs that are available to them, like landscaping, architect, uh, mechanics, uh, blueprints, uh, CAD, coding. Um, and if, there was a story in Mass Life, what, last week, if you Google on Don Jarvis, um, the principal, uh, Don, Donald Jarvis is the principal of C-Tech, gave a wonderful story about what's happening over there, the culinary arts program, how, you know, how, how great it is. So, um, if you're looking for more information, that's one place to, to look as well.
Yeah, I was actually speaking to, giving kids the opportunity to take a test that might talk about, uh, career interests and vocational capabilities or interests in that area.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry if I misunderstood. So yes, that would, that could certainly be part of this person's responsibilities, where they would engage kids with some career inventory testing. And have an opportunity to figure out what, um, careers they might be interested in or suitable for and, um, quick, quick story. I just found a, a LinkedIn post of a former student from years ago who had posted a career interest inventory he took when he was a sophomore in high school. And it projected him as being, um, suitable or interested in or having the skills for, um, it was for marketing and for community relations. And now this young man is working down at Disney in a senior executive position in, in the area of public relations, so it's, those things are really important, I think. Giving kids an opportunity to figure out their passions and their interests and tie that into the learning, that's really where, what, where this is going to be, I think, important and helpful to us.
Brilliant.
Yeah, appreciate the, the question, though.
And we've seen local, um, other local districts have, what, up to 100 kids participating in the programs like this right now?
Yeah.
So we're, uh, we know that there's a, a desire for it out there.
We're really well situated geographically, you know, to engage kids in work-based learning opportunities and internships and that kind of thing. Uh, the, we, we also think that, you know, part of that, kind of helping kids make connections, identify passions, and explore their interests, ties to including STEAM-based programming, and when we say STEAM, science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math, and kind of approaching those disciplines in an integrated way. And so that's something that we're hoping to introduce in the sixth grade. It's really a budget-neutral thing, but it's worth noting here as something that, you know, dedicating existing staff to drive that goal. Over at Wolf Swamp, we, uh, we are looking at, uh, at all of our elementary libraries. This budget would introduce full-time librarians. And so there's just a small increase that we would be looking for at the three elementary schools. At Wolf Swamp in particular, it would provide an opportunity for that individual to be direct project-based learning activities that address those library standards. So delivering library standards, but in a way that is, uh, project-based and, uh, involves a lot of inquiry and research. And then lastly, Armin mentioned earlier, um, the, uh, at the bottom of the list there, the, the participation in, uh, innovative science assessment. It's a DESI pilot. We've been invited into it. More, more to follow, but essentially it's more performance-oriented and of course, testing as opposed to sort of more traditional, uh, MCAS testing that, that we might be familiar with. So, we think it's a good opportunity for us to give kids those more performance-based learning opportunities. Uh, and then, um, just some quick brag points. This is a, a slide that maybe you've seen in, in previous presentations, but we like to dredge it up. This is from niche.com. It's an organization that uses a lot of, uh, federal statistics and stakeholder feedback, uh, that identified Massachusetts, Long Meadow as, as being one of the best, best places to teach and learn in, in the, uh, in the Commonwealth. And so that is at the state level. The next slide shows how that looks nationally. These numbers place us, for the most part, in the top 1% of districts in the country on those indicators there, so. Those are really exciting numbers for us and they cover a lot of ground. It's not just sort of, um, standardized test data that we're looking at here. It's a, it's a variety of indicators. And then, um, the last slide, again, a more, more traditional indicator. You can click through it, Tom. Uh, the, how we fare on AP tests and how we fare on the, uh, MCAS tests that, that we are familiar with. So, uh, we like to think that there's a, it's an important investment that we make in public education here in Long Meadow. We appreciate the amazing support we get from the community, from parents, from the Select Board, from the School Committee. And we like to think that our, our students are delivering, uh, based on that investment. So, happy to take any questions you have or field any comments or bring back any, any feedback to the School Committee.
Just one more comment, I'll quit bugging you, but, uh, as a parent who's had several children who went to college and got, you know, AP credits to help them, uh, it, it actually saved money, you know? Cause they didn't have to take those classes and it's, it's a nice thing that kids can get ahead at, at the high school level and start their college career early, during their junior, senior years, so.
No doubt.
Mark?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, when you're doing your budgeting, are you doing any thought about 2025 or 2026, should we hit the two and a half ceiling?
You know, when we sat as an administrative team, one of the first assumptions was that we didn't want to build something that we didn't think was sustainable down the road. Now, you know, I don't, I think, I don't have a crystal ball necessarily, and we know that. There's, you know, potentially some fiscal realities out there that we'll have to face. But, you know, we, we tried to be cognizant of that and, and not, um, you know, build something that, because frankly, there were, there were a lot of items that were sort of left on the table, I think, and there were, um, some harder decisions that we made, both at this committee level and then even at the administrative level. So, yes. Yeah.
Can I just point out that of the $800,000 general fund increase you're looking for, I think about 650 is the net of salary attrition plus growth, so, you know, it's, there's not a lot of new, new. It's 650 out of 850 is just kind of paying the bill, paying for the people?
Yeah, yeah. I think largely, you know, Mr. Mas is really good and Mr. Mr. Hatch back there is the Finance Subcommittee Chair. I mean, they, they challenge us to think about, um, achieving our goals with existing staff, existing resources, before we talk about more. Um, I, I think that conversation happens, you know, regularly with the administrative team and.
I could tell you, we're taking a deep look at the, the attendance trends and the students coming through over the next five to 10 years as well, Mark, looking at the cohorts that are coming through, trying to plan, make sure that we see where, where it is, then, you know, there are some lower numbers coming through probably in the next four to five years, so we are taking a look out at that and seeing where possibly in a couple of years, we may not need X. Well, you know, how can we replace it with Y, you know? Now, we weren't expecting, you know, on the second day of registration, there'd be 160-plus kindergartners coming into town, but that's what's happened so far, so that can always change, but, you know, we are taking a look out.
Well, if I could, that kind of leads to my next question, which is the, the one chart I don't see here, and, and I just wondering if you look at the comparison of per-student expenditures in Long Meadow versus whether it's peer communities or statewide communities and just in general, how we're doing, cause, you know, the, there's a perception that enrollment is, is slowly decreasing. But I guess the question is, you know, how does our per-student change compare with the per-student costs in the rest of the Commonwealth?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna guess at that right here, Mark, but that is definitely information we could get to you. I think, you know, our enrollment, as, is, as, as Armin suggested, it, it seems that we are graduating, generally graduating more students than we're bringing in at the K-level, so. so, um, we're trying to be responsive to that, but I'm not sure the numbers are falling off such that we can kind of have that elasticity, you know, to allow for, you know, sometimes the, the staffing levels don't necessarily mirror a drop-off in 15 students or something, or, you know, we're, we're losing a small number each year.
Right, two, two per grade doesn't do you any good.
Correct, yeah, that's a better way, better way of saying it, yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing I would say is that the Student Opportunity Act, which everybody was probably reading a lot about over the last couple of months, really is not accretive to towns like Long Meadow. So, um, you know, the, the legislature made no hidden agenda about it. This was to benefit the gateway cities and not the suburbs. And so the majority of that money, well, you'll see extra spending and extra money in Chapter 70 will definitely be going to Springfield, Lowell, Boston, the, the larger gateway cities.
Thank you, thanks, Mark.
Um, I had a couple of questions. One is, yeah, what you mentioned, the increase in the Chapter 70, um, I didn't see where that was, because we're getting some more this year too, aren't we? Is there an increase?
It's a modest amount. We're, we're looking at about only the, sort of the minimum of $30 per student, which, that's in the governor's budget anyways, which is the equivalent of, uh, only an $82, $83,000 increase over FY '20. So it, it really is, we didn't get the windfall that perhaps we had anticipated when the Student Opportunity Act was in its early stages of formation, so.
And we won't see more in the upcoming years based on that.
Yeah, the second, the second component of the Student Opportunity Act directly related to, um, to special education and trying to help districts who were, have a lot of out-of-district costs. Long Meadow has done a, a great job under Jean Fontaine and before, to make sure that our children are getting the best services that they can, that, of the appropriate services that they can in town as opposed to, uh, being on a bus for an hour or two hours and, and, and keeping them in town. So unfortunately, that second piece of that, because of that, because of how effective she's been in the budget over the last couple of years, that part doesn't help us out either. So, um, we get the modest increase in the Chapter 70 because they're, they were guaranteeing in it, like you said, like $30 per head. Um, and then the last component of it was the health insurance, and I don't think we've seen what the definitive number or if there's going to be an increase to the, the general fund from the health insurance aspect of the legislation.
So that's still pending?
That could, we could get, so I bumped out of that, but again, undetermined.
And when would we hear?
Well, I think it's when the, when the legislature passes its final budget and, and the Chapter 70 numbers are finally known, but, um, so that's a little ways off. But, um, you know, I think, I think the Chapter 70 number came in below what we anticipated, frankly, you know? It, it was.
But it was 80,000 more than, than the previous year.
Correct, yeah, which, you know, um, it was, I think we were, you know, back in the fall, I think we were anticipating a bigger bump in Chapter 70. Of course, that money flows directly to the town and, you know, and, and we're funded well beyond what, that is minimally required by the Chapter 70 funding formula anyways. But the other, the other component, one of the biggest factors, if not the biggest factor in the Chapter 70 funding formula, is enrollment. So if your enrollment is falling, or even by one student, chances are it's gonna, it's gonna ding you in Chapter 70 funding.
That's disappointing.
Yeah.
Uh, also, you mentioned some new, I think we talked about it, Armin, new positions. You mentioned, is the nurses a new full-time position?
Yeah.
And the, um, career coordinator, internship coordinator, that's another full-time position. Are we seeing a positive or a level number of FTEs from last budget to this budget?
Yeah, that was a question from the members of the school committee as well, and overall, Tom, what was the effect, 1.0, 1.5?
Well, from last year, this year, it's about six FTEs.
Okay, thanks.
Some of them already placed this year, though.
Cause I was including the link program, right?
Yes.
Now, so when you say, explain that to everyone, what does, uh, six FTEs mean? Is that, that's, is that six full-time positions?
Six full-time, six full-time equivalent positions. So as Tom mentioned, if, if it got picked up, but there are, there are some programs that we started this year that are already in the budget that just need to be reflected in the FY '21 budget. So for example, the, the center school, um, link classroom, serving, uh, students with autism, that's in place, it's up and running right now, was a mid-year investment that we were able to make, and, um, that needs to be reflected in the FY '21 budget.
And that was how many FTEs?
Uh, I think that was two associated with that. And so one of the, you know, the, the, there's, there's pluses and minuses here, as, you know, we might realize some savings by bringing programs in district and serving kids in their, in their hometown or home school. Um, and so there's some savings there because the students aren't being educated in more costly ways out of district, but we've got to make the corresponding investment here in district by having staff to support their needs. So, uh, where we've seen the FTE increases, it has been around, um, student safety, it's been around, um, supporting the needs of some of our neediest learners who would otherwise be educated out of district. So, uh, as Armin said, we've, you know, we've, we've been able to, um, be more inclusive and be more supportive of students, but do it in a way that has reduced our out-of-district costs. But you might see an increase in the FTEs as a result of that.
So let me just figure this out. So two full-time positions, one into the special classes for autism in center school, one new, a, a second full-time nurse for the high school.
Right.
And the career, uh, development person, so we're up to four, who's the last two?
So there's, there's some, there's, there's a lot of ups and downs that, that go well beyond what you're describing, Marie.
Right.
And Tom, you can, you can help me out on this, but, um, the, there was, there was also some positions that were eliminated.
Okay.
The, the, the full pluses and minuses, we'd have to kind of give you a more detailed explanation of, but for example, we're, we may be down a kindergarten classroom in the coming year, which means we're down a kindergarten, uh, assistant, a pair of professors.
No, I'm trying to figure out who went up, not who went down.
Yeah, and that's the one I was.
Which one, the?
So, yeah.
So did we go from some part-time to full-time positions?
So in, there are a number of positions that were eliminated, the K assistant.
Okay.
At center, there was a, um, a pupil adjustment classroom teacher at the high school that was eliminated.
So then we really increased a lot more if we lost some positions, so it really went up.
So the total.
The additions were more than six FTEs.
So total FTEs this year versus last year will be 455 versus 454, so it's really a net increase of one FTE.
Oh, he says six FTEs.
Come on up, Tom.
Come on up, Tom.
Am I adding to the confusion?
Or you could use this mic.
Yeah, you can come over there too, yeah.
So I would say you're both right.
And now you're leaving the word.
You're right. Um, yeah, the net, so when we started the FY '20 budget, we did have a proposal, I believe it was about 450 FTEs. During this fiscal year, we've added about five FTEs net. We added a kindergarten section over at center school this fall, so that added two FTEs.
Okay.
We also had to expand preschool, we added a half section in our preschool, that added 1.1. At the same time, we also shifted some of our Title I funding and reduced some tutors because one of our schools didn't qualify. So the net effect through all the changes so far this fiscal year is about five FTEs that have been added.
Oh, five, okay.
So from where we currently stand to where we're proposing for FY '21 is a net increase, again, of a 0.9 full-time equivalent. With adding all of the positions we talked about, with the reductions of the positions that we are eliminating, turns out to be a net increase of 0.9. So yes, you are correct that in effect, we did have to, uh, we added more positions than six in total, but at the same time, we offset them with other reductions that, in positions we are not, uh, renewing or bringing back. But as Armin indicated, we're at about 454 currently, and we're adding 0.9 in the proposed budget.
Okay, and that will, Paul, affect our pension numbers in September?
Not pension necessarily. Not pension.
It all depends if they're in the teacher's retirement system or the, or the county retirement system.
Okay.
We don't pay into the teachers.
So it will affect the, it'll affect the medical and the other.
Potentially, potentially.
In the, okay. All right. And maybe, does anyone else want to see that breakdown, um, information to us?
I can, if I have a spreadsheet, I can send it to you.
And the, right now, the only two completely new positions would be the full-time nurse and the career and the two additional teachers for the autism program.
I don't know if it makes sense to think of any of them in, in isolation like that, so we're, as we're adding the, the career position at the high school, we're also reducing a specialist position at the high school.
Okay.
So that, that created space for that career position. So, um, I, I think looking at it holistically is probably the best way to think about it, instead of pitting one position against another. And so as Tom explained, where, where we are right now compared to where the budget proposes, it's a, it's a 0.9 increase.
Oh, my goodness.
It's, it's a greater increase when you compare it to where we were when the budget was set at this time last year.
Right, Marie, if I can just, I, I think for, for clarity, I think it's important for us and for the community to understand, you know, point in time versus point in time as opposed to, you know, June 30th versus July 1st. And, and, you know, July 1st to July 1st makes a whole lot more sense of, you know, because during the year, do, things do change, but, but really from, you know, this time last year till this time this year, it's a, it's a six FTE in, increase. And I think from a perspective of, of making things clear, people need to understand that. Also from the big picture of medical benefits which are going up 8%, things like that, I think it's important to understand that we're not just increasing the school staff by 0.9 FTE. It really, it, it's, you know, it's the difference between, uh, if you will, and, uh, you know, a balance sheet and a, and a, and a budget, kind of.
Yeah, and I think that's a really fair point, Mark, uh, and, and one I don't think anybody would disagree with, but I do think, like pointing out what Marty was talking about, when we talked about adding staff to the preschool midterm, preschool's also a tuition-based program.
I'm not saying you can't do it.
No, 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 no.
You know, like you said, 120 people show up for registration.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of how we, how we track it.
No, and I, the only reason I bring it up, because I think it's really, you know, we as a school committee are asked by Marty, hey, can we add somebody preschool teacher mid-year? The answer is, what's the tuition benefit on that as well? So that's like a revenue generating program, doesn't cover fully, but that's part of what we're taking into account when we're adding those types of things. But I, I totally take your point and it's very fair.
Tom?
Yeah, and I just, in terms of the autism program in center school, I mean, that, it's a revenue-saving program because you don't have to send people out of the district. And it also affords residents of the town to see their children included in their school system, you know, all the way through. And, um, you know, we look at, there's some very successful people with autism that just need some adjustments in school to, in order to be successful in mainstream. So if kids come in later, um, and are autistic, is there a middle school program or?
There is, yes, yeah.
Okay.
So we're, you know, increasingly equipped to deal with that, and you're reducing, yeah, as you said, you're, you're, you're avoiding costs for sending kids out of district, you're reducing your transportation costs for students going out of district, and obviously the, the great benefit to kids of being educated in their hometown.
Yeah, so I think listeners have to be aware that those are the kinds of investments that really, you know, are going to pay off over time, you know? And it, it is, you're adding some programs, but, um, you know, it shows worth of thought.
I thought the finance committee might want to go where Tom is, so you have a microphone, because I realize, Marie, you don't have one over there, and anyone else you want to bring up from your committee who might have questions?
Or you want to?
Oh, or you can do that.
Thank you, Marie, for recognizing me. I, um, I really just had one i- issue I wanted to address. Um, I heard, uh, Mr. Mark Gold ask about the levy ceiling issue. Um, I don't know if you can get back to the slide where, um, uh, there was, I believe, a 1.89, um, projected, was that the levy increase based on this budget? Is, was I reading that correctly?
The 1.89 is the increase on overall expenditures that this budget proposes.
Okay, so that's not.
But as the, the increase on the general fund request is 2.49%. So it's a, our, our overall expenditures would go up by 1.89% over last year.
So my understanding is that the, uh, the budget that's currently being proposed, that the, um, the increase in a levy that that's going to require is currently more than what the, the finance committee's target was, and we're going to be discussing that, um, over coming weeks with Paul. Um, I, I don't want to get into that issue specifically, but I, what I do want to look at is the 2.49% increase, um, compared to the other fiscal years that we see up there. And what I, what I think the finance committee needs to know is whether your position on this particular budget, um, it, if you see this as a, as a hard position, or if there is, um, a degree of flexibility, because from the perspective of the finance committee, we have to know whether, um, the gap between the percentage levy increase that this particular budget is going to drive and what the finance committee's target is, would have to come from other departments. Um, and that's, so, so that's really the question, what, is, is there any wiggle room left, or do, does it have to come from so, another department at this point?
So I would say from a school committee perspective, that the budget we are presented, we think best represents fiscal responsibility while meeting the learning needs of the students of the town. Uh, to maintain the quality of education in town, uh, there was a long list of items that, uh, were requested by the administration and the school committee said no, it just goes beyond. So from a, I don't know if I would call it a wiggle room, uh, I would say from a point of collaboration, I think that the school committee is really welcome to being collaborative with both the select board and finance committee, um, to balancing what the needs of the town are with the, the needs of the students. Um, and Paul and Marty and Lynn and Tom have a great working relationship, and if, you know, people were to come back and say, you know, the town just doesn't have it, then we would have to ta- take it back as a committee and discuss what our options are with the administration, and that's what we talked about at our last meeting.
My, my worry in that is, is just sort of being able to be responsive to, um, enrollment and class size, and, and so it's, it's only February, and, um, my assistant, Mr. Dragantis, is telling me that they're wearing a path to her office for, for kindergarten registration, and so that's something that we have to keep our eyes on, and we've got some other classrooms and grade levels where, you know, we, we hope we're not at a point where we have to tip into needing another section. So that's the, that would be my word.
Thank you. That's clear, thank you.
I think, uh, one, I think the main thing we need to understand at this point from the finance committee's perspective is where does this, these numbers from the school committee put us in position with regard to, you know, I think that we learned last fall that the select board's target was going to be ideally an increase limited to 1.75%. Maybe, I don't know if Paul is probably the best person to answer, I don't know if you saw these numbers before, but are we on track to achieve that with the school committee's numbers tonight?
I think I'd hate to relay that message, it's Lynn's budget, it's not been presented to the select board at this point in time. It's kind of premature.
These numbers are new to us.
So we're, we're going to get that exciting news on March 2nd. She's still working on it, I think, the final details. Any other questions from the committees or comments? No? All right, well, thank you.
I guess, Marie, I would just want to say thank you for the opportunity to explain our budget, to come to you tonight. Um, again, uh, we've had some really great collaboration with the boards and we would just hope that that continues and, uh, you know, we've, I've been in some contentious years and Mr. Gold probably remembers working with me on those.
No.
Um, so this is, uh, this has been really, really a, a great collaboration, so thanks.
Well, I think that's why we're all here in the room, we want to make it work.
Yep.
And we know how important the schools are. So thank you very much for coming and presenting and. Oh, Richard.
Yeah, one thing echoing in on Mark's, um, because everybody in this room has touched on this, on this max rate. You can tell it's on everybody's brain, and we think that it's inevitable we will hit it with our current contracts and all the labor costs to drive. A lot of it is really out of our control, it's being driven up by labor contracts, both on school side and our side. But we know based on the figures that, uh, this time is going to hit us, maybe three or four more years out, and at that point, we'll, we'll be scrambling to make decisions because the budget will be dictating what we're going to do. Services will have to be cut, something, not services, something will have to be reduced, and we won't have a choice. So that's what we're saying now, I think it's appropriate to be seated in this idea and everybody's brain be thinking about the future, you know, like, staff in a position, do we, are we going to have to have that position as that crucial to the mission if we're cut $300,000 or $400,000? That's the things that we're going through. And that's the things that we're going through and you hear that by finance, everybody is coming up to speed on this issue. We've been talking about it for about eight years now, about eight years. And so far, the curve hasn't stopped because we are, we are, we are overspending what we're taking in. So that's what's killing us. If we, if we could suddenly just stop and space and only spend what our, our growth was at the tax rate, we'd be a happy world. But we don't seem to be able to do that, Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, we're not overspending what we're taking in, we're, we're growing at a rate we can't sustain based on the prop two and a half ceiling.
That's another way of putting it.
Okay. I just, I like that way better if you indulge me.
So we're growing faster than we can maintain.
Right.
Okay. I agree, that's the same, I, I think it's the same thing, but that is what's happening. And, you know, we'd like to get the miracle cure, but it doesn't seem like we're on the, we're on the, what, the 10th year of a growth cycle right now in our economy? And everybody feels relatively certain that it's going to change. So we're going to go into leaner years at the absolute worst time that we could for our markets. You know, we've got a senior advisory council that's firing up and they're going to be trying to drum some ideas on how to redo what we do in our town for 30% of our population's 60 and older. So we have a major concern in our community for our seniors that's starting to raise its head. But there may be opportunities which we have yet to see when that study is completed. There may be things from out of that that we just haven't imagined at this point. So I, I guess I would challenge you guys, we challenge ourselves, finance being challenged, keep thinking of ideas for somehow to push the bubble out. Even if we can't stop it, push it out as far as humanly possible because we never know what the future's going to bring, there may be changes take place.
Tom?
So Marie, I, I get the sense from what I'm hearing from the finance committee and people on the board, that the question that you probably should have a chance to put on the table, you know, an answer is with this new full-time position for the nurse, is that something that could be a halftime position or, you know, how did you come up with the determination of full-time? I think you might as well put it out.
So we, it's worth, it's worth noting, so it, first thing to note is it's a, in the interest of trying to be responsible with what we're building here, it's, it's a LPN position as opposed to an RN position. So the, as an LPN, she would work under the, under the RN at the high school. And so in that sense, it is, and we think it's a kind of a responsible way to meet the needs of kids. We received a notice back in June from Mass DPH that we were not, we were out of regulatory recommendations on our ratios of nursing nurses to students. And, you know, the, the truth is that our, the medical needs of kids are, are way beyond what they were even five years ago. And so we need to be responsive to that and, and make sure that we're putting in kids in a position where they're, they're able to learn. So, so even with that position, we felt like it wasn't, you know, we, you know, there are districts that have, have nurse leaders who, who are not, who do not have a student caseload, there are districts that, it's not unusual to see a high school our size to have two RNs. So we would have, with this proposal, it would be one RN and one LPN. So we think it's kind of a responsible way to address the needs. I mean, it sort of balances the, what we're seeing, the needs of kids with, I think, the fiscal position that, that we recognize that we're, we're in the middle of, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a good example of, I think, you know, where we went back and forth on, okay, we really would benefit from a full-time RN, but maybe an LPN would, would be a better solution, a more responsible solution.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to have Lynn's budget, March 2nd, and the finance committee is invited to come and hear that and see what sort of magic Paul and Tom and Lynn were able to pull together on this. But thank you very much, I appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
So now we're, we're looking for CPC and capital, but I think they're running a little late, they were in another meeting, so why don't we move on ahead in the CPCs here? Oh, Steve just walked in. Are you ready to do community preservation? Okay, great. School committee just sent in. Now, did you bring anything in or do you have a slide presentation?
I do not. I did think I.
A long time ago, something was sent out, right?
Yeah, I was having a list of the contracts, the projects we approved for this year.
Oh, okay.
There were six projects.
Let me see, do you know what date you sent that so I can resend it to everybody?
It would have been the third week in January or so.
Third week in January, okay.
Someone can make some copies real quick, maybe that's the way to do it.
Oh, we just lost all the school people. Debbie, can you see if they can make copies of his list? And, well, I try to find, the third week in January?
It was about then because I know we.
Could, Marie, could you see if they could copy something for us, a sheet? Are you going with the school committee now? See if they, the school committee, Tom or someone can copy that? The school committee people, are they over there now?
No.
Oh, they didn't go to the other room. They went that away, oh, okay. All right, thanks.
Well, I'm sorry, what I, I can, I can tell you what the six projects were, if that's any help. I, I think our last meeting was January 16th, so it would have been within a few days after that, but I, I sent a, basically a chart that had the.
That's familiar, I remember that.
Steve was.
I think I sent it to Marie and to, I think I might have sent it to Paul Festerzick as well.
Okay, oops, here it is. You sent it, you said without it and then you sent it with it.
That's the draft warrant.
Oh.
That's what, I have that as well, and that's the draft warrant?
Yeah, but that, that, that has all the projects on it.
Yeah, that, that has the same thing, that has the.
So let me forward that to everybody now.
So I can pull that up?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I had the draft wa, I didn't do the draft warrant and I, and this is my own chart, a spreadsheet that we use ourselves. I'm sorry if I'm a little disorganized.
Just called late breaking news?
Yes, late breaking news.
I'm sorry, I was, we were, we were traveling today, it's about back an hour or so ago.
I'm just going to blame my co-chair who should have been on top of this.
The one that didn't get CC'd on that.
That would, so, so the blame rolls back here, but I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I just think I sent it to everyone, see if you received it and.
Was the title of the warrant article proposal for?
Yes, that's what I received.
Yeah. While, while you're looking for, there were ultimately, there were six applica, we, this year, we had eight applications of which we ultimately approved six, which has made it a lot, much simpler year than last year, where I think we had 17 applications and ultimately approved nine. I can go through the ones that we approved if that's, if that's helpful.
Yes.
While, while you're looking at this. The first one was a phase two for Russell Field hail erosion project, which was submitted by Kevin Wright through the, I believe through the baseball, baseball association. That was $20,000, we did approve that.
And why don't you tell us a little bit about what that does?
Yeah, that is, if you can picture where the baseball field is, over on Russell Field, it will continue to do, be some work for the, to control the erosion on the hill on the right field side there. And they actually, this is phase two of a project that we had approved the year before. There will ultimately at some point be some money coming back from phase one of the project because the cost did not turn out to be as high as they expected, but it was better practice for them to use the, to do a separate application for some of the additional work rather than try to repurpose an earlier application. And they, they've been doing a good job over there. The second one that we approved was a, for Japanese knot wood management for $4,800. That is on conservation land, that was submitted by the conservation commission. There's a parcel of land, I kind of remember exactly where it is. It's not down in the meadows, we have approved projects like this down in the meadows before, but this is on, it is, I'm trying to recall which, oh, it's on Chestnut Road.
Okay, so we have two, as Richard just pointed out, one for $4,800.
Yes.
Conservation, the other one is the 1.2 acres on Chestnut Road for $15,000.
That was, that was a mistake in how I drafted it, that, that's an earlier draft. This $4,800 for the Japanese knotweed.
Okay.
And that's actually, there's about a 1.2 acre parcel on Chestnut Road and we've seen, the conservation commission brought, showed us pictures, Japanese knotweed, knotweed is a, an invasive species that just takes things over. They've had real success with that down in the, in the meadows on various, two previous applications that we've done. The, the $15,000, I missed, I made a mistake, I think, in the warrant article, in the articles, because I tried to clone too many things at once. The $15,000 is actually for a skate, a study for a skateboard park, for the feasibility of the cost, location, and all the other issues for a skateboard park. That was submitted by Alex Grant. It was sort of a, for lack of a better way of putting it, a follow-up to an app, a proposal that was made at town, I think at the Fall Town, Fall Town meeting, I believe. And this is for a study about the feasibility, again, feasibility of the cost and location of a skateboard park, and we approved that.
So you funded something that was turned down at town meeting?
We funded something, yeah, yeah, well, yes, we did.
That's interesting. I, I, why would your committee fund something that would then denied at a town meeting?
Well, because it was, it was a citizen's petition and I think a, a certain amount of it, I was at that town meeting. And I, I have to, if I can kind of make a lawyerly kind of comment, I can't, I don't speak for the entire committee. But if you recall correctly, that's, that came before the select board as a, or before the town meeting, as a citizen's petition, I think by three young men, probably about age 12 if I had to guess. And it wasn't an issue, it wasn't a, this is not, and I think it was, felt like it was premature, maybe not appropriate at a town to come up to the board on a, at a town on a citizen's petition. This is money to fund whether a skateboard, skate park of some sort would be, would be feasible in town, what it would cost, where it might be located. And frankly, I think, my own personal view is I think they were going about it the right way. They had, they, we, we asked them a lot of questions about where they go for skateboarding, who they think uses it, the culture around skateboard parks. And this isn't going to say that there's going to be full funding for a skateboard park, this is a, a study to determine whether, whether, what it would do to get a skateboard park. And ultimately, it's not funding the, the reason I think it's going about it the right way is that they're asking for somebody to fund the feasibility of it, not necessarily to fund the entire.
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard what you said. But this was still a project that was brought to our town meeting and was rejected. And I think it's highly, I'm going to speak as myself, you're distributing taxpayer dollars in, on the, on the fund, what is it, a million dollars or so that you get out of the tax base each year to export? Whatever it is. And it just seems to me extremely odd that we would have something that's turned down at an official town meeting, turn around and your group authorized that study. I, I find that inconsistent with the values being placed in your organization for taking care of unfunded needs in our community with a special tax base when you've actually gone against the wishes of the taxpayers. That's how I see it.
Well, I think, I'm going to, if I, if I can respectfully just respond to that, if it had come up as something on, if it had, if it had not come up as a, as a citizen's petition, I think I might, I, I might hear you a little, I might feel a little differently. But also, this recreation is one of the things that these funds, that we are allowed to fund, that we do fund, things that wouldn't get funded out of the general town budget.
That's correct.
The, one of the big differences is that if, is that, that was asking for funds out of the general town budget on a citizen's petition by, by some 10-year-olds or 12-year-olds, this is for funds, one of the four things that we can provide funding for is recreation.
I would say, I've heard you, and I will again remind you, and I'll remind everybody that's listening, that this was turned down at a town meeting. And I think it's highly inappropriate for you or anybody else to turn around and fund something, I don't care if it's a citizen's petition, it was a legal warrant article. And it was debated and it was turned down at town meeting.
Okay.
I, I don't need, I, I want, I can't comment any further, Mr. Foster.
I'd like to comment on the opposite side.
Go ahead, Tom.
That if you get the needs of 12 and 15-year-olds in front of a town meeting, they may not get met, especially if they're trying to take money out of the wrong part of the budget. And so I commend you, you know. Kids in any, every town across America are experimenting with the best ways to have fun. And when they think the best way to have fun is drinking and drugs, we're in trouble. Skateboard parks are a good alternative and I think that that's the kind of money that should be spent in this town. And so I think you're on the right track.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall, there was one thing, did you stand up and support this at the town meeting?
Oh, I probably didn't.
No, I don't think you did.
I didn't think it was a good idea.
So you didn't support, okay. I just wanted that for the record, you did not support.
Well, again, I think at that time, it was maybe not the best way to do it.
I just wanted to clarify my memory.
But I would say we need, you know, to start, follow the process, do some studies, you know.
So I just want to review the list again to make sure we got all. So you have 8,000 K for administrative costs.
That's correct.
223,000 for the stores' library roof.
Yes.
Is that correct? 120,000 for the community house roof and gutters.
Correct.
20,000 for the Russell Field.
Correct.
Repairs. The 4.8 for the knotweed.
Correct.
And the 15,000 for skate park, I guess you would call it feasibility location, no, there's no location that's been chosen for it.
That's correct.
It's just a feasibility of what might come out there. And you, how many projects came in front of you?
There were eight projects. There were two that we did not fund. One had been submitted by Dr. Marinelli at, as the tree warden, for some public shade tree replacement, that was for $20,000. He withdrew that voluntarily. We checked with the state, with our state organization, the Coalition for Community Preservation, and ultimately thought that was not, because he, it was looking for trees along the tree belt as opposed to on, on town-owned land. It was not, it was not proper under the statute. He may, he may try to lobby that, lobby the state to have that changed, but he voluntarily withdrew that. There was also one for the Blueberry School, Blueberry Hill School Playground Equipment Replacement, that was for $233,000.
Oh, wow.
And we did not fund that. Of the three, of the three applications that were made by Mario Maza, this was his third priority. We, he, we've worked with him over the years, he does try to prioritize what those projects are, what his wish list is, if you will. And his first two were the community house roof and gutter repair and the stores' library roof replacement. So we did not approve the Blueberry Hill School Playground Replacement.
A quick question on the stores' library and the community house, is that, is that the end or is there more work that needs to be done on those two buildings? Because every time we turn around, there's just like more money going into, and I know they're our historic heart of our town, but are we getting near the end?
On, on some level, those are probably better questions for Mario than for me.
Yeah.
I can speak to what these two projects are for. If you may recall, we actually approved one for $27,000 last year for a repair of a portion of the library roof. This is for the replacement of the, of the much larger portion of the roof, which I think was put on in 1991 or 1992. It's, when the library was expanded, it's at the, it's, it's 20 some odd years old now and at the end of its useful life. And the stores, the community house gutter repair project, we approved $68,000, I think it was $68,000, last year. And it turns out that once he got the bids, once they got in there and once they got the bids in, the, the amounts that were necessary to complete the project are far higher than he was anticipating. So this will allow that to be completed. What may come up in other years, I, I don't have that.
No, I just remember hearing gutters and roofs before, but this is sort of completing the gutter roof situations.
Yes, yes. This should allow the, the roof to be, at the library to be fully completed, it should allow the gutter and facade repair at the community house to be completed, as far as we know.
All right, well, thank you. All right, well, thank you for your work. Any questions on the projects? No? Well, thank you very much. Could you leave that, I, I sent delayed, I'm sorry, you guys, the list of warrants, but if you could give us that spreadsheet, and Debbie can then send it out to everyone so they can have that for town meeting.
Yeah, that would be great, I can send other copies of this as well.
I apologize for talking to you earlier.
Oh, no, that's okay, I should have gotten contact with you. All right, thank you very much for bringing them in and all the work you do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My pleasure.
So now you see we're a tough crowd, do you want to, Capital, are you heading out or are you going to come do it? Thank you for coming in.
Thanks very much for giving me the time to finish my other business.
Well, Steve just wandered in too, so we've been timing it perfectly, thanks.
Timing's everything.
Good night.
Good evening, I'm Steve Metz, 171 Coventry Lane, Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee, and I came tonight to explain our thoughts and our recommendations.
And I'm going to interrupt you one minute there, this afternoon, we received, so if you go to your emails outside the agenda, you will see what Dr. Metz is discussing now.
Can I just ask that, maybe Debbie can amend that to the agenda and post it back on the website, so that residents can, can get it.
That would be nice to do both, that's a good idea, Mark, so the CPC.
I don't know how you have to reflect that it wasn't the original agenda, but.
Yeah, we can do it.
I'm sure you can do it fair enough.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Paul Pasturic had advised me that we have approximately $2 million for capital expenditures this year, so that kind of constrained us a bit. I presented the, the recommendations we have, we wound up, we were given request for 2.3, almost $2.4 million, so we had to make some judgments as to what was most appropriate in our, in our view. One thing I do want to thank Dr. Mr. Weiss about, we've had good communication and collaboration over the years.
Oh, fabulous.
And so, we try not to duplicate things, so we've been taking care of the size of the Community House, we need to do the top. As you can see, our recommendations are based on four criterias, as has been for the past several years. The first one, that they have, we have to fill, projects are mandated by governing bodies to save the town, so forth. Next criteria is if it involves safety, that's considered very high priority. The next two are a little bit more wants than needs. If they improve the efficiency of some function of the town, we consider that to be an important factor, you know, it saves money or prolongs lifetime, lifespan. And finally, you know, these are really wants that are people requesting, is not necessary but nice, okay? Excuse me, my voice is kind of going.
Sorry.
So we fit our recommendations into the, into the $2 million, and as a result, we had to leave out four of the ones that were requested. One thing I do want to bring up to your attention, this is a debate that we've been having with, among ourselves, and with sometimes the Director of Finance, and so what constitutes a capital purchase and what constitutes maintenance, one of the things we have decided a long time ago and continue to believe is that things like painting of buildings, even though the total cost might be qualified for our limits, is it's not really right to, to put a whole bunch of maintenance items in, under one roof and call it a capital project. That's something we've, that's an opinion we've held for quite a while. And the rest of it is on the list I gave you, and I don't know if anybody wants to ask me specific questions about them.
Mark?
Yeah, I, one of the items says replace car number two, whose car?
The fire chief's. We don't deal with police chiefs. He's got two cars that are, travel around with their fire trucks, and these things get a heck of a lot of use, and both of them are kind of falling apart, so.
Isn't one of those brand new?
Well, one is, number one.
Okay, so number two is, okay, see how quick I caught up on that?
I guess that the, the other one is, well, let me ask something, Grounds Division Trucks, there's two of them?
Yes.
Are those, I mean, did somebody look at the ones that are being replaced and look at the age of them?
They're, they're both, they're, trucks they're replacing, Mr. Mazza went and great deal tale about these, you can basically see through the floorboards of them, they're heavily used, especially during the winter for plowing snow, and their transmissions are going, the cost of upkeep is really starting to pack on his budget.
Okay, in the past, Dr. Metz, we had had, there was a packet that usually came to the, I, I don't know if it was on the website or something, that had the entire packet of capital submissions, is that, I mean, just to go back and look, I'd love to see the years, and I don't need to go through it now, but just for curiosity, what the years are of the trucks, all that, is that stuff out on the, is it on a capital planning web page?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I don't, it's not, the age of the trucks is not, I think, directly put on it, they're roughly nine years old, as I recall.
No, I understand, we have no plate, they don't go indoors, and they, we can't wash them, I get that, that's part of the justification for the new DPW is to extend the life of our, of our vehicle, at least in my mind it is. The other thing, I guess, that is on here that surprised me is Fire Department Kitchen, $50,000, what is that tale?
The kitchen in the back of the Fire Department is really decrepit. It was, it was built with basically low-cost, housing-grade materials, and it's basically just falling apart. This is a facility that's used by people who work there 24 hours a day, it's their only place to eat, and it is not very suitable for a workplace for people who work this hard and work these hours. The, what they want to do is they want to put in industrial-grade cabinets and fixtures, including the refrigerator, which if you go in there, the door is falling off of it, really in very bad shape, and the request is to make it functional and, as well as a place that they can stay when they're not working, and I think it has a very high morale booster, as well as being functional.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
So the, you also have listed out here Turner Dam Project.
This is a dam that's, it's an earthen dam that is, controls the water coming out of Turner Park. It's like a lot of earthen dams around here, sorely need of repair, replacement. If it fails, there's a lot of water behind it, and there's, residents is downstream from there that would be severely damaged if that thing lets go.
Yeah, and so it'll be replaced with the same kind of earthen dam, or?
No, it's going to be up to code, up to grade now. The one that was put in there was of grade, you know, 20, 30 years ago when it was built, and that's part of the reasons why it's going. They have done the best they can to try and maintain it, but it's just gotten beyond their ability.
Did they have firm plans and specs for that?
They have, not firm plans, they have good estimate from a company that builds dams.
Because that, that seems awfully cheap.
That's the number they have.
I have a, Paul?
I was just curious, Dr. Metz, on the position regarding our difference of opinion, what you believe my opinion is on these painting issues?
Well, the, it was presented to us as a capital budget item, and I apologize if it didn't start with you, but you're the one who finalized, and I've wound up with it.
Yeah, okay, just to be, for your committee, I'm passing along the requests that come to me, to you.
I apologize.
Okay, I just want, for the record here, for the second one also.
You're not making a judgment call, huh?
No, I'm not making a judgment call, I'm just organizing them and summarizing.
So could you clarify what was not funded then, on this list?
The sign boards are, I don't fully understand what these things, but apparently the mobile signs that you put in front of the police station or on the roads to say this is the speed limit, that sort of thing. And it was very far down the list of requests, Mr. Mazza. The Blueberry Hill Playground Equipment you've already heard about from Mr. Weiss, are, if you look at the things above it, the playground equipment would be 10% of that request.
Yeah.
And we've got an awful lot above it that are, like guardrails and so forth, that I think are a little bit more urgent. The Painting Hall School interiors, we talked about before, that is something that we would like to consider as a maintenance item. And the Greenwood exterior doors, they are obviously in pretty bad shape, you see them. On the other hand, we're replacing that with a new building, and it's not really clear exactly what configuration they're going to have in the Greenwood building, and we just thought that it'd probably be best to wait before we do any major construction.
I have a question, there's a couple of new things on the high school, like the fire door replacement and a.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually for all the, all the schools you mentioned that somehow got cooked towards.
Oh, so the fire door replacement is not just the high school?
Right.
Are there any high school doors that are being replaced?
Oh, yeah, the fire doors in all those schools are being replaced.
And why did the high school, we just built it, have to replace the fire doors? Did they tell you?
Apparently, the way they're put in was wrong, and so, and so, as they close, apparently they knock the molding out of place, or the frame out of place. It was, it was probably not a very good design and choice of doors, as I understand it.
And what about the display cabinet at the high school? And the display cabinet, how much is the display cabinet?
That was, that was, to be honest with you, I had the same question.
Okay.
Apparently, the glass they put in there is not the provered one, so somebody went by it and knocked against it, or something like, and the glass shattered.
You're going to put in laminated or tempered glass in all the showcases?
Yeah.
Instead of, instead of window glass.
Why wouldn't that have been maintenance?
Well, it was considered, well, it seemed more, we accepted it as a request because it was a, it's not fixing the glass, it's actually replacing it with something that's more suitable, so.
Which is replacing glass, right?
Well, replacing a bad glass, like, you know, the kind that you put on pictures, with one that is actually safe for the students.
But I mean, still just replacing glass, you're not replacing the unit or anything?
No, no.
Okay, so, okay, to me, it's just, seems like it's maintenance, it's, I'm concerned, Dr. Metz, how many, how many boilers do we have at Woolswamp School? I can go back in the records, we've spent, I think, five, $600,000 down there. It's just, where do they keep coming from?
I'm told this is the last of them, apparently, I've asked the same question, believe it or not, Mr. Hoster.
I may have to go back and pull my records, I mean, it's amazing, it's like flavor of the month.
Basically, the, they have, as I understand it, two or three boilers in each school, they, they sort of switch them off so that each, no boiler is working all the time, and sometimes they have to have both, both of them working, to me, especially in the very cold days.
But am I crazy? Didn't we replace both of them?
No, what we did is we spent a lot of money repairing the tubes.
No, we went back and replaced them then.
No, you've replaced a bunch of them.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of them in town, it turns out.
But these are Woolswamp School.
Well, no, they're not all, they're in other schools as well.
One Woolswamp, one Town Hall.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking about Woolswamp at $175,000.
Woolswamp's on the other side.
And that's like, that's like $100,000 more than the last boiler we replaced.
I don't know, we did Glenbrook, we did Williams, did we do, I'm not sure if we did Woolswamp.
Woolswamp was not on the docket, and also the Police Department is.
Now, the question is, do we, you know, there's funding out there, if we buy, we get rebates, are you looking into all those?
Yes, my understanding is that's been done.
Mm-hmm.
Was it Blueberry? It was just, we just got the rebate back with that.
Okay. And but can we get some for these, do we have to?
We would submit, yes.
Okay. And is there some programs that they will actually pay upfront for some of these, if we go through Columbia, these are Columbia Gas, because I know, they were asking us.
I don't know that they would pay upfront.
They were asking us, if you've got boilers, we've got money, and.
Yes, right.
We'll try to Dave Miller on that, because I know.
And one of the things that's come up with these boilers in the past is, we should have a contingent agreement with them, because they, they send the boiler, and then they don't send the burner, and you can't use it without the burner.
Yeah, we had a two-month wait between the two.
It was unbelievable, the wait we had that one time.
Was not aware of that.
We had to close the school.
Now, you, this was after you had already approved everything, and then it just got messed up. Rick, Mark?
I think this is a question for Lynn or Andy or Paul, a couple of these items, name drain, the parking lot of Blueberry Hill, the Glenbrook irrigation, well, I don't know about irrigation, but.
I can answer the Blueberry Hill one.
But the Turner Park Dam, and, you know, some of the, any of those fall under our stormwater programs, really, do they?
Like all of them?
Well, I'm not sure Turner Park Dam's.
It's a detention bond.
Yeah, sure.
Well, yeah, I mean, not that, you know, I mean, money's money, so we've got to pay for them one way or the other.
No, but it makes a difference if you can pay it out of stormwater fee, rather than general fund, where we're hitting the ceiling.
We're hitting the ceiling, right now, we still fund the stormwater with over, it's almost 60%, it's coming out of the tax levies.
Yeah.
But, but should we consider bonding something and charging the bonds to the stormwater utility?
This is really bad.
For those, for those small.
Well, Turner Park Dam's $117,000, that's not, that's.
Yeah, well, that one might be different, but again, the drain, you know, again, it's a small amount. I, I mean, you could, but it's still going to end up being funded out of the general fund, unless you want to, well, I mean, you know, the question is, how high do you want that stormwater fee to go?
Right, I hear you, okay. So the answer is theory, but money's money, so let's just do it, okay, I get it.
Well, it's going to make a difference when we start talking about how much we're bringing up the general fund, if we're going to hit that ceiling.
When we come to the budget, and I think you'll see what the stormwater fee is going up, what the general fund is, is under the tax levy capacity, I think you guys can make some adjustments and, you know, make, make some, you know, some judgment calls as to where you want to go with some of those, and that's all, because one would offset the other, absolutely.
Right. So Paul, I'd also, is it, is it a good time to borrow money, though? I mean, interest rates or?
It is a good time, and we plan on going out in the spring for a number of projects, Woolswamp Fields, Phase Two of the landfill, the additional money for the DPW, and we're also looking at refinancing the second one that we took out on this building.
Oh, good thinking.
So we're, we're looking at those, and hopefully in sometime in the late spring, or maybe early summer, we would hope to have that bond issue out on the street.
But I think that's worth looking at, I mean, Mark, I, I can agree that if we could borrow money, you know, to pay off of these projects, and it was a low interest rate, and then we take it out of the, you know, stormwater fee, I mean, that would, you know, that might just do, well, it's just a different way of doing it.
It spans the base of pay, and it also, as Marie says, takes it out of the general fund.
Richard?
Yeah, I have a question, do we presently have a shoring system? I'm not aware, I just, do you know if we do?
That's not familiar to me, but doesn't mean we don't.
Yeah, I've never seen it, I don't think, because they're proposing that we start going trench safety, I imagine the shoring systems for the trench work.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if, if you, the town manager, want to move into that venture, because I think we've been contracting a lot of that work up to this point, to really deep work in town, instead of us having to mess around, because this, shoring systems require some pretty heavy equipment to move around the systems and to set them, and we normally, I don't think we've got loaders that are capable of moving the things that I've seen in and out the deep end.
I know they don't have the shoring system in, in the inventory, here.
Right.
I don't know what kind of equipment they have to move it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a safety device, but I thought with, we had, looked like we've been doing most of that work was under contract.
That's true.
Unless this is a very shallow shoring system, but any, what, four, five foot, whatever, I just, I just wonder what we're getting into on that, that's all, for a liability.
I have to admit, I did not ask him that question.
Yeah.
Just to, for, just a point of information, when this, when I developed the initial capital plan, I provided a link in one of my weekly updates, so you do have all of the backup documentation, but there is a significant two-month lag time between when I submit it to. it to when Dr. Metz is here presenting to you. So, those documents are there. The shoring request is to purchase an OSHA-compliant excavation shoring system. The current shoring system they have is not capable of OSHA compliance in all situations. And this one's adaptable to multitude of situations to meet OSHA requirements. So, I don't think this is anything deeper than what they're already doing. I think what you're referring to is like the deep excavation that's required.
Yeah. You, you had requested a setup midterm evaluations, no other word I can figure. Where they come to you, or you get the group together and everybody gives you a briefing on these projects?
Yes.
How's that work?
Pretty well. Mr. Mazza's very responsive.
Yeah.
And as in my report, you'll note that we tend to keep that going, because we feel that we're kind of your representative of folks, and we're an arm of the select board, so we try to, thought it would be a good idea to keep up to, up to speed with what the actual progress is, not the money part of it, but the actual physical progress.
Many, many years ago, I think when I was at Kind of Committee, we talked about the completion report aspect, where there's a submitter of a finishing document that has everything, pictures and everything else, goes into historic building files, especially on some of these major projects. Did they ever get any of that going to where you're seeing a completion document?
Not a completion document. I, I do see a spreadsheet that tells me the, how far it's gone and when the projects are actually completed, and, and information about if they might fall behind or something like that, from a money, from a money point of view.
The document I'm really talking about has, has references, POs and everything else. I mean, it's a 100% record, it's not, it's not a CFO-type thing where they show that things are on the table, it's a, it's the actual finish. Yeah, what are you talking about? Okay, great. I'd like, I'd like that, that replacement car too, for me, whatever it is.
It's a nice car.
Yeah, that's a dandy.
I'm sure it's a Prius.
Has lights and sirens and everything.
It must have everything.
You can put that on a Prius too.
I will, I will take that too, and check my old files on that Wolf Swamp. I may be mistaken, because I know they turned flavor of the month there for two or three years in a row.
Well, part of the trouble, as I understand it, is they bought all these things at the same time, and they're all not the kind of standard we'd like to see. I'll, I'll leave it there.
Well, you know, the other thing too, is I think we brought up, is if you look nationally, we're replacing boilers at less than 50% of what nationally is taking place, so it was something to look at. And of course, you know, we inherited all the systems from the schools. The schools used to do the maintenance up to what, nine, 10 years ago? So, we inherited a lot of these problems and possibly systems that hadn't been maintained at the highest level of preventative maintenance. And maybe we're working to that now, and that we're going to do a much better job for the next third, four years.
Mr. Mazza has put into place maintenance re, you know, scheduled maintenance actions, so I think you're right, I think we'll have less problems in the future with these, this equipment.
Well, I think Mr. Crane also pointed out there were some defective boilers we had, that by a certain company, that we had fortunately bought a lot of them.
That particular company actually made, put in all the boilers in the major buildings here. And they're all, as I say, had some problems with design and construction, so they're all failing about the same time.
Yeah. I think Richard brought up a good point, and that's the cost of the dam, and it's probably going to really go over 200. I remember we've had figures talked about that dam for a while, it's supposed to be our worst in town. Aren't there special programs with low rate that the, the Commonwealth's trying to encourage us to fix all these failing dams around the Commonwealth? This might be one that qualifies for those programs.
It's possible. This was for vegetation removal.
Oh, that's it? Not replacing the dam?
I just had it up here, I'm sorry. It, give me one second. Read it to you.
Yeah, because I thought we were talking at 300,000 or something to replace that dam. It was collapsing in Turner.
So, maybe they're talking about just interaction.
Well, he, she says cleaning up vegetation around.
That was part of it, and I think it was more than that.
Yeah.
Let's see. The project is to remove the vegetation, protect the slopes, and establish grass.
We're going to try, we're going to try and reinforce the dam a little bit too, because it just, that, that, what you're talking about wouldn't achieve the, that goal.
No. So, maybe we should, if we're going to be doing a patch job at 117, should we look at what the repair of that's going to be? I know when you were looking at the full Turner property, the first thing that the architects were saying when they looked at it for the adult center was that, that has to be cared for, or nothing can be done with that property, because it's failing, and you're saying it's going to eventually affect the neighborhood.
I did not say that.
Yeah, that was-
You said that.
That's the information I received from the DPW folks.
Do you happen to know the hazard classification? Is there hazard classification?
Yes, low, level two. There is a full tie-in bond report that accompanies his request, and they estimate it at 117, and it itemizes all of it.
Okay.
And it is, sorry, this was, I'm sorry, low hazard, class three.
Okay. I was going to say, it's got to be pretty low. Because you don't have, I don't know what the depth of it is in there, how many acre-feet of water, it's likely not much, it's all silt at the end.
I don't know either, I'm sorry.
Real swimming, I know that.
Maybe used to, Tom, I guess it's pretty silted in right now.
Yeah.
You know, you're, well, look, you're only 35, so it's only 34 years ago that you're swimming there.
I don't know if they use that for swimming.
No, no, I think it's where they had the, the bar and the shellfish were served. Down there was a very popular restaurant in Turner.
Oh, in Turner?
Yeah. Thank you very much for all the work. Any other questions for Dr. Metz?
Thank you.
And I'm, thank you for those background documents, we usually don't get them, and if you could just resend those to everybody, so they can spend some time, you know, looking at them before we get together.
I found it, Lynn, thank you. I did find the link in that email.
How often do you all like to hear the progress reports on the projects?
How would you like?
No, how often? I mean, I can present them as much as you want, but they don't change that much of-
What do you feel, do you see, do you think it's, we should be seeing them August or September, or do you think it should be twice a year?
I think once a quarter would be-
Once a quarter? Is your recommendation? Okay, for whoever knew the new chair will be, will pass that on to once a quarter. So, the next one would probably be, well, we're in the second quarter, so-
Or we can get it back on-
June, we probably wouldn't get much information, so maybe August? Yeah. And then maybe another time in the fall, because I just think town meeting, things get backed up, or often don't even get the bids out till the beginning of July on some of those May projects. Well, I'll pass the, that thought on to the next chair to see what they think.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody, for your attention, appreciate it.
I appreciate your work.
Good night, Steve.
Okay, let me get back to the agenda. Do you want to, should we go straight to the-
To adjournment?
No, to the bylaws?
I think we have a resident here.
Oh, you're here for resident comments?
No, well-
I'm actually, item number, it's the road closure.
Oh, you, oh, you actually are accompanying the road closure? Well, we will bring you up first. I thought you were part of the committee's capital or-
No, I'm just dressed that way.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Joshua Rice, 171 West Moreland Avenue, and I'm here representing the Long Meadow Girls Lacrosse Association.
Okay.
And because of the work at Turner, at Wolf Swamp Fields, the closing of them, we have to move our jamboree. This is the premier event in, in this, and I'd say in the surrounding three states, in terms of girls lacrosse. We have between 1,500 and 2,000 girls coming to Long Meadow, and we didn't have a place to put them. So, back in August, we talked to the athletic director, Michael Capitasto, and he agreed to allow us to use Russell Field and that. And I believe Ms. Simmons, we sent you a copy of the map, if you want to pull that up. And so, you can see how the field, how the fields are arranged. And so, I contacted Sergeant Mezzaforte at the Long Meadow Police Department, and he and I went over a traffic plan, and you can see where the black bars are, that's where we'd like to close the roads. So, just, just to the east of where Blueberry Hill Road comes out onto, onto Bliss, and then at the other end, just before Bliss Court.
Okay. And parking?
Parking. We're going to use the high school for parking, that's the main lot. Blueberry Hill is going to be our overflow, and then Williams as well.
Oh, okay. All right, any questions? Mark?
Yeah, I've got about a million of them. And the reason I do, I guess, is because we're asking to close the center of town on a Saturday afternoon. It's the center of Long Meadow. And I guess the issue is, having done that without us knowing, or at least without me knowing, what the alternative is, is pretty dramatic, theoretically displacing or inconveniencing many, many, many residents for the benefit of few residents and a lot of out-of-towners. And so, as you can see, I'm predisposed to oppose this road closure. I think it, I, I understand the, the safety requirement, that, that, you know, we're going to have a lot of people crossing the street, and I think that's a, a real issue. But we couldn't have, you know, I say we, couldn't have picked a worse spot to ask to close on a Saturday in, in this, in the springtime, to inconvenience hundreds and, you know, I, I know we've, we've done traffic studies there, there's hundreds, nearly thousands of vehicles that go through there, and we're benefited, and it's, and it's not primarily a Long Meadow program, it's primarily an out-of-town program. And so, I guess my question to you is, how do you justify this? How, how do you possibly just, you know, it costs the town money, it's going to cost the, you know, it costs the town money when you use Wolf Swamp Fields, it's certainly going to cost the town money in, you know, wear and tear on our field. How do you justify it?
I'll take the last question you had first, and that is, number one, due to the late date of it, it's May 16th, athletic director Capitasto feels that, given that we'd only have another week in the lacrosse program, which is, which is the primary user of those fields, we're not on the baseball field, any damage to the field would be minimal. If there is rainy conditions where the field is swamped or the fields are going to be damaged, we don't run the tournament. So, that's, that's been addressed. In terms of benefiting only out-of-towners, I dispute that, because this is our number one moneymaker for the entire Long Meadow Girls Lacrosse Association, so that directly benefits us.
Benefits the lacrosse association?
Yes.
How much of that goes back to the Parks and Rec Department and to the town?
Well, I think if you look at where it says tents right there, the lacrosse association last year constructed a lacrosse wall, they're out of our own pockets. We, so we're giving back to the community. This is also one of the most popular activities in Long Meadow. And I think that, starting off with the girls, and also the boys, starting off in the second grade program, moving on up, certainly the success of our high school program shows that this is an integral part of Long Meadow. This is, this is a benefit to the community, what we have here. Also, if you look at this, we're asking for a detour. And the detour, there are no actual streets, Blueberry Hill is still open for residents to leave that way, there is, the Bliss Court is still open to go that way, so we're asking for one detour.
Cars, the cars that go east on Bliss are going to come up to, and expecting to go towards the Long Meadow shops, are going to come up to Blueberry Hill Road and be told go left?
No, sir, they're going to come to Grassy Gutter. Sergeant Mezzaforte said that it was appropriate to direct them down Grassy Gutter and then a left on Williams.
Who's going to do that, and how?
We are hiring two duty officers to do that.
So, so we're really closing Blueberry Hill from Grassy Gutter, excuse me, we're closing Bliss from Grassy Gutter to Blueberry Hill, except for local traffic?
Sorry, if you, if you-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Back, no, just as we were talking about, back on the map, you'll see that the closure is, is just east of Blueberry Hill, so Blueberry Hill is open.
But, but you're telling people, but you, you've got to be prepared to tell people at Grassy Gutter to turn right.
Yes.
So, essentially, the distance from Grassy Gutter to Blueberry Hill ought to be only people who are going to Blueberry Hill or to Tanglewood or people who live, it's local traffic only.
That is correct.
That wasn't in the, in the indication to us. So, so we're literally going to route all that traffic the other way around the high school?
Yes, sir, I believe that was in the application.
And is, is there going to be officers over by the infamous speed bump?
There'll be officers, as reported, as requested by the sergeant, we'll have officers at those two barriers. We have not requested them at the speed bump, we certainly can if you feel that's appropriate.
Well, it's going to be all, I mean, it's going to be a mess on that side.
It can't handle traffic now. I mean, it just, it ties up, you get 10 vehicles up there, it's tied up, it's a real mess. And the reason being, we found, you never know if anybody's really going to slow down for the speed bump or not. And so, it really gets a lot of caution, that's, we're, we're by that every day, it's, it's a mess, just for normal-
No, I understand.
Yeah.
So, we won't have people rushing through that area, it'll be slow traffic.
But it'll be, it'll be a mess, Marie, is what it'll be.
They're talking about the merging of traffic.
Yeah.
It's, it's, William Street is, that is an extremely heavily-traveled street. To be merging all the traffic coming from Bliss into that, they're going to have, they're going to have their work cut out for them.
So, you might want to mention that to the police.
Well, I think the application's in front of you, and if you'd like to require that an additional detail be placed at Williams, then I think it's within your purview to do that.
Oh, yeah, they have to have somebody at Williams.
Tom?
Well, I just, these are going to be really nice fields. Are they going to want to do it again next year? Where are things going to be at Wolf Swamp Fields next year?
My understanding is that we still have, it's a two-year period, so we're looking at doing this, doing this again.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I personally think you can manage the traffic, you know, it only goes till 3:00, so the afternoon rush to the supermarket is going to affect it.
3:00, I believe there is-
Eight to three, right?
Eight to three, does it say that on the application? I think that was, I believe, the schedule's in flux on that, and I believe our, our final game would, would start at 4:00 and end at 5:00. So, I believe that on the application, I think there was a, there was an 8:00 to 3:00, yes, if I could amend that to say, to say 5:00 PM.
The weekend after.
Long Meadow Days is that week.
It's not usually the problem, but the January, it's-
Right.
So, this is not the weekend of Long Meadow Days?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
It is not, we were under the standard.
Oh, why don't we change it?
Well, I think, it sounds like a wonderful program, and I think our merchants will be very excited by the people be moved from the Wolf Swamp up to the shops, because people will wander over and probably spend some time at the shops also.
Yes, ma'am, and in fact, in addition to not only notifying them, we're also notifying the teams that we're sending it out to, that we encourage them to do business at these places, particularly the restaurants. We've got a lot of hungry people.
But don't park there.
Yeah.
Right, not to park there, right, that's-
But there's that parking at the one end of the field, where it connects to the shops, right? You know what I mean?[1681.32]
No, that's not our park.
They're, they're.
Legally, it's public parking.
It's public parking.
But.
Could you just turn that down to the.
And that's. Yeah, this is, as, again, I started off saying.
But Walter, that's my exact point. This is a huge event we're putting in the middle of town.
But they. Long Meadow benefits gigantically from this.
Name me three ways.
Okay, we're not going to, we're not going to have conversations like that.
I was talking about parking, you know, I wasn't done. And so, she, Lynn pulled this up. So, at the end of parking lot, of four, Field Four, there's that parking lot there that connects to the shops.
Right.
And, you know, in terms of benefit to the town, if we could direct people to park in that lot, then people would use the restaurants. And of course, there's meal tax and all that stuff, which benefits us. And, you know, and I think that that would be something I would consider. Versus, you know, in the high school parking lot, they're kind of away from our local businesses and, you know.
Well, I think we've got to keep the parking separate, unless the shops request it.
Well, it's something you could talk to the shops about, I guess.
Right.
Yeah. You know, I think it's, it might be something we'll end up wanting to do in the future for more events. I, I like the idea of us even looking at the idea of closing certain sections in town. Then we have a lot of pedestrian crossing back and forth. So, it's almost going to be like a street fair in the middle of town. I think it's going to be an interesting and a wonderful event. I'm supporting it. I do want to see the change, see the adjustments, you said, on the change. Has to be on the street closure information, that has to be amendment. And I think you've heard the board saying, "We are concerned about people that be able to make a left on that Williams Street." Especially, what we do have with the bump is people slow down to go over the bump. And some people who are making left think they're slowing down for them. So, we'll have people from out of town who don't understand the problems with that speed bump. So, you might want to have extra care of that.
We're also going to have all that normal Bliss traffic that's coming down that way, coming through that intersection too, that's never been there before.
It's going to be heavy.
Unless they kick them off over the other end of town and take them down Converse or something.
I would like to say that the alternative of having officers at both ends, trying to negotiate, having cars going back and forth with the amount of people, I think that the traffic would be, could actually be worse if we did not have, if we did not have the road closure. Simply because of, if you can see, we have, we have four fields over there. And, and the teams are going to be scheduled at those different fields. They'll be moving back and forth constantly.
Constantly, you're right.
I, I think we're, as a town, are concerned about children crossing that street as it is because we're looking at new sidewalks for that area. So, I think this will be not just good for the town, but it'll be interesting to see how we do handle the closure of that street for the future. Lynn?
I just wanted to ask again, did you reach out to the businesses or you're going to, to let them know?
Yes, that's, that's another board committee member who's tasked with that. And that's, that's in the works, yes.
If you could communicate back to our town manager that that's done, maybe give her copies of the letters or the contact information so she can make sure the merchants are completely prepared for that weekend.
Okay, so.
Richard?
Yeah, well, how did we do this resolution on these traffic officers? Lynn, are you going to, town manager's just going to take care of that aspect of it?
I think we should make the approval contingent upon the recommendations of the police chief and the addition of a duty officer at the intersection of Grassy Gutter and Williams Street.
And with the amendment that the time is 8:00 to 5:00, did you say?
8:00 to 5:00, yes.
8:00 to 5:00. Because that has to be, that's what we're approving, is the 8:00 to 5:00.
So, so, here's the problem. We're approving 8:00 to 5:00, but our police chief approved 8:00 to 3:00. I'd love to get the police chief's comments on an 8:00 to 5:00. You know, it's one thing for us to amend it, but does that change his recommendation or requirements?
So, we could say contingent upon the approval of the police chief, which we have to get it to him soon. And.
It's not just on his approval, but on his, his requirement, comments and requirements.
And that we want the addition.
Yep, the duty officer.
So, contingent upon the, the final approval of our changes by the police chief. And the two amendments are the additional police at Williams Street and the 8:00 to 5:00, and with the final approval of the police chief.
Williams and Grassy Gutter.
Yeah, that's better. Is there a motion to, for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the street on May 16th, 2020, with no rain date, from 8:00 to 5:00, with the other adjustments that we're asking for and the approval from the chief police.
I'd like clarification of what those other adjustments are.
Okay, the adjustments are assignment, assigned officers at the corner of Grassy Gutter and Williams Street. And clear notification of people to exit on Grassy Gutter, unless they're a local resident needing to proceed further down Bliss Road. And I think that's.
Extension of the time from 8:00 to 5:00? Extension of the time to end at 5:00, not 3:00?
Yeah, I always said 8:00 to 3:00.
And any other changes the police chief sees required because it goes to 5:00.
Okay, do you agree with that final?
Right, and that the police chief would approve any final agreements with a difference in time change to 5:00 P.M.
And if we could have the, you report back to us what the police chief decided to do with that, as well as let us know about the communications with the merchants. Is there a second to Tom's motion?
Yeah, I'll second that. You read your second, you were asking a lot of questions.
You can second it, that's fine.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, further discussion?
Yeah, I, I guess my further discussion is, the system is backwards here. And that, that we're making modifications to the amendment, to the, to those, to the request, this road closure request. And then telling the police chief, "Well, we've already approved it, so what do you think about that?" And I think that's backwards. If, if, you know, if this were not a road closure coming, you know, it's May 16th. Today is February 18th. You know, I'd much prefer to say, to go back and say, you know, have the chief redo that. I mean, you don't need this approved today. It's going to get approved. You've made a commitment, unless you haven't made the commitment, which doesn't sound like it is the case. Sounds like everybody's approved this, we've rented out the, because, Marie, I would add things like, you know, that the police, these police officers be extra duty, that the town not pay for them, that DPW, DPW workers before and afterwards, and whatever it takes to fix up the fields, be separately allocated to the cost of, against the people who are running this, this event. None of that's in, in here. And I don't know what agreement you have with the Parks and Rec Department, but these aren't Parks and Rec fields. That's the difference. These are school fields, okay? And, and it's a whole different ballgame with school field because we still have athletics afterwards. And I know we don't anticipate issues with these fields. But if there are, the first person who's going to get a call is our DPW. And we're going to spend town money fixing up the fields for our, for our sports, for our athlete, school sports programs, anticipating that we may have several, what I'll call postseason tournaments there for, for the interscholastics sports programs. And so, I'm concerned that none of that appears visible to us.
Well, you right now have asked the gentleman this question. So, what are your recommendations or what your offer is in regards to the fields?
If I may, the gentleman in the back referred to the, the dozens of volunteers that come out. We run all of the cleanup and pickup. We do all of that. It's a small army of parents who are dedicated to lacrosse in Long Meadow. And they come out and they, they fully help us with this. Number two, the athletic director, Mike Capitasto, was the one who gave us permission based on the athletic calendar and knowing full well that there might be damage to the field. Most postseason tournaments are done at neutral sites, not on there. So, that, that issue has, we feel has been addressed. We've already been in contact with the DPW, Scott LaValle. They paint the fields, that's, that's the extent of what they do. They paint the lines, as we had up there. They paint the lines on the field, that's it. The rest of us, we take care of this. And the Long Meadow Girls Lacrosse Association fully pays for all the police officers and the equipment rental. We pay for pretty much everything.
And so, you can guarantee me there'll be no need for our DPW to show up there Monday, Sunday, or Monday, or Tuesday, or any time, to, to do anything additional or special to bring that into compliance for what the school needs.
They move our goals.
And that's it?
They move our goals, that's all. And they line the field.
I hope you're right.
Sir, we rent a dumpster?
Of course they should, of course they should. Of course they should, Walter, there should be something going on. I mean, this is like a signing, you know, offering an open-ended, "Go do what you want to do." These are, these are town resources. We're thrilled to let organizations use them, but they got to be returned to us in the condition that we do. And we can't be afford, afford to be generating costs to the town. And that's the point, whether it's police costs or cleanup costs. And if you're saying, there's no problem, sign the contract because you know you're not going to spend anything.
Well, I think, why don't, you've, you've expressed your concerns, okay? And some of the things, we have a meeting on Monday. That's not too late for you, is it? For us to make a final decision?
No.
Okay, so Lynn, concerns, if you could talk to the athletic department and DPW and make sure there's no concerns about the, the state of the fields afterwards. Talk to the, the police chief to see how he feels about our change that we did to his safety plan that he had already put in place and the amendment, the time. And if you could get back to town manager also, to what your communications are, when the shops will be communicated with. Because I know they have their own activities and the sooner they know what's happening, the better. And if you could then bring it in front of us on the 24th. I know it's supposed to be only a goal session, but we've already shoved some other things in the beginning. And so, we will, we will address that with all of that in front of us. And we'll have a full board then, too.
Thank you, ma'am. One thing I would like to say is that this is not the first year we're having this tournament. It's the first year we've done this before. We've had the arrangements with DPW, it's at Wolf Swamp Fields. But this is something that's been in place long before.
But nobody cares what the Wolf Swamp Fields look like.
Apparently.
When you're done. You know, and, and we've never, you know, never gone back to the DPW and said, "What did it take to bring them into compliance?" Because.
Actually, they're very respectful, Mark.
And I'm sure they are, Walter. The issue is, though, the requirements for Russell Fields are very different from the requirements for Wolf Swamp Fields. So, the way you leave Russell Fields needs to be different from potentially the way Wolf Swamp Fields. And that, and that's my point.
We will let DPW and athletic department weigh in and get back to us. And thank you for expressing those concerns. And we'll make sure we'll, we dot all our i's and cross all our t's. And we'll, we'll have this on for Monday.
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can.
Sorry, point of, just for the minutes, do you want to rescind your motion or do you want to table it?
Table it.
Table.
Table a motion. And again, it's a good thing you're here.
Yes, glad you're staying.
You're welcome. And so, I'll come back Monday at 7:00 for the meeting, or?
Does he need to be here for this? What you could do is check with the town manager to see if, if, we're looking for really reports from the athletic department, DPW and the chief. And if all those reports are in order. But what if you want, I can put it on very first thing. We have the building committee coming in at 7:00. If you come in right at 7:00, I can squeeze you in. Or if it works better for you at 8:00, I'll, I'll slip you in when it's going to work for you.
7:00 should work.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, thank you.
Just don't let me forget, Lynn, I promised him a 7:00.
Marie, I'd like to make a formal motion to table the.
Oh, he did?
Table the motion, well, we didn't vote on a motion to table it.
Okay, so, is there a second to table it?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of tabling it?
All right.
Okay, we'll get back to you. Thank you. We wanted to go down to, and now I've got to get back to that agenda. Where someone is here to talk about the bylaw. So, if we could go down to the bylaw section.
Yeah, right under street closure.
Proposed, right after street closure, proposed bylaw from the planning board. Walter, you want to come up? We have a very inquisitive board, so.
We do?
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't even think of showing up until I looked at the agenda and I said, "Well, you know, I sent you guys a letter, which was approved by our board for some bylaw changes." And I said, "Well, maybe, you know, instead of you guys just reading them off and, you know, legally, you have to just, you know, move forward with them." I figured I might come in and.
That's perfect.
Entertain any questions you might have. I mean, they're fairly straightforward.
So, what you've put together here is the bylaw that was passed in May, except by the attorney general, except for one section that was found not to be.
Right.
Acceptable.
Right.
And you are putting an amendment to that bylaw for Springtown meeting.
Right, so if you look at our item four, that's, I'm sorry, not four, it's number three. That's the one that the attorney general sort of dinged back from Article 42 from Springtown meeting. That's when the original citizen's petition called for a $1,000 a day fine. And apparently, in the state laws, which is stated here, general, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21, you can only have 300. So, as it stands now, the way our bylaw is posted, there is no penalty. So, it's, it's blank. So, that, that item is not even there. So, that's, just to add it back in, it complies with the state law. It's something that shouldn't be contentious or agreeable to. I believe, I know, Mark, you've probably consulted, I know Mark Strange was.
No, it was me. I, I talked to the attorney general's office because when I originally talked to, I think it was Bruce, he said, "Well, we're going to put the maximum allowed by law." And it turns out that that wording's not allowed.
Right.
It's got to be a set amount and it's got to be $300. And so, I passed that along. So, I, I think it's, it sounds like we're doing what the A.G.'s office wants us to do.
So, none of these amendments are contentious. I think they're all, the public should, should be very much in favor of them. We've added in, just further defining definitions. We've added in testing and low-frequency noise. What I'm going to do is, we have, I don't know if you call it the, how do you, how do you name the, the little section you put under each warrant item when it says, maybe the rationale or.
Yeah, explanation.
Explanation. I'm going to develop that with Bruce Colton and the planning board. We'll come up with those little explanations to go under these. I mean, they're pretty, they're pretty straightforward. One through four is all related to the gas pipeline and gas facilities bylaw. So, those are just fine tuning that. I'm not sure, I think they deleted number two, they're going to delete testing and low-frequency noise. But I think it's not, I don't think you can come to any way of measuring that. So, I think it's sort of like throwing out a carrot to, to the state, saying, "Look, we're getting rid of this, but we're going to take the other articles and make them a little more defined, a little more, a little more strong." Which is, again, if you move down to number four, that's just adding a little more definition to the same section, B 6.6. The new thing that we added, which goes back to several situations we've had with site and design review, is applicants that really don't want to play fair with our requirement for a traffic study. This has only happened once. We have never had an applicant for site and design review ever argue with us about a traffic study, a peer review, or an independent study. In recent examples of large-scale projects, we had the Long Meadow Shops. And then we had the Dwight Road project with, with complete compliance from the applicant. More recently, we've had an applicant for a, an enlarged gasoline station and bakery on the south end of town who didn't seem to want to comply with our requirement for a peer review or an independent study. So, what we're going to do, and we did have a town council, Belcher Timmy was with us last week. So, none of this was just made up and thrown out. I invited Jesse to come to our meeting and, and also Mark Strange came, which was great because to get his, his planning experience as well. So, we decided, this isn't necessary, but it adds a little more armor to the, to the site and design bylaw requiring a traffic study, which means we have the right as a planning board at its discretion to commission an independent traffic study.
And that is not just about the natural gas facilities.
Nope.
This is all.
Well, it could be, yes, because again.
This is actually, refers to all.
This refers to any site and design and commercial property.
Okay.
So, again, it, it's not a contentious thing. And we're not looking at a resident to say, if you're going to add a, a three-car garage, you need, you know, a traffic study. This is basically commercial. So, again, you know, lighter examples would be the Brewer Young Mansion. There, we waived the traffic study, we figured it's low impact. We, most of the time waive these traffic studies. We did a traffic study for the high school here. That was, that was required.
If you think it's necessary, you ought to be able to get it.
Absolutely. Because, you know, even though, you know, the traffic engineers will tell you, "Well, we are certified and we put our stamp for approval on that, so we're not really lying or really working for the applicant." You know, it never hurts to be too careful and say, "Well, maybe we just get our own independent analyst on it." And just to be certain, cross the t's and dot the i's. So, that's as far as we've gone. Now, I know Lynn, your billing commissioner has had some proposals. But at this point, with the deadline looming for closing the warrant, and we've already set this, our amendments are already set for a public hearing on March 4th. So, that's already, the ball's already rolling forward on that. I don't know, do you think anything further?
Paul and I have the re that we would intend to bring forward based on our conversation when we met in early February. Paul has a draft already, I have another draft on one I'm working on. So, our hope is to get those to you for you to hold the public hearing in time, also to get them on the warrant.
Well, that's the key to it, though.
Right.
Mark?
I don't know that we need a formal vote, but I, I think the select board ought to just, you know, endorse, bring, you know, the town manager and the, and the planning board bringing these amendments forward to the town meeting. I think they're, they, we need to straighten them out.
Right, they do.
You pretty much gave a good argument for the item number four.
There's been a lot of good collaboration on it. So, we learned our lessons a little bit from town meeting. So we learned our lessons a little bit from town meeting. But it was important. I mean, these, it was nice to have a citizen petition to come forward. Traditionally, I hate to say this, but Select Boards and Planning Boards will tend to, you know, avoid too much confrontation, unless it's really an urgency. So I appreciate those, the Pipeline Awareness Group bringing this forward. And I think it's an important part of our bylaws, since we do have this amazing natural gas infrastructure running through Long Meadow right now, which is not like any other towns. I mean, Agawam, East Long Meadow, and, you know, maybe going to the west to Hamden and Munson. But I mean, for this valley, we're pretty much ground zero for a huge transportation infrastructure of natural gas. So it's good to have this law.
Lynn, do you want us to vote on an endorsement, or just vote to approve the warrant articles when they're in front of us?
The ones that Paul and I are working on?
No, these. Did you want to vote tonight?
Oh.
Well, these are actually from the Planning Board initiated, these aren't from her. So these are, these are under our.
Just wait till they all show up.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get them on the draft.
Just get them on the draft.
Okay, so we'll wait for the warrant.
Because we can, we'll have plenty of time, we can, you know, I can literally have a public hearing the night of the town meeting before the meeting opens up. So, I mean, it would be nice to have it sooner, but.
Well, I think you feel from the group that there's really no pushback on any of these things.
Yeah, these will be fine. I think what Lynn's working on, those we could have at our April meeting, that way we don't have to have a special meeting. I think they'll fit in, as long as, you know, we have to meet the usual posting requirements, the 14 days, put them in the local newspaper and all that. But I think if she can get that formulated with Paul Healy, and I'm happy to help you guys, we'll get those moving forward, too.
Yeah, I think there's also been some concerns in the past about bylaw changes getting out to the public. I know that there's, they're posted on boards, and maybe you want to post them on the website so people know some proposed changes for bylaws. Before we even get up to the 14 days, if we have them available, we should let people know. But the Board doesn't seem to have any complaints or problems with these. Thank you for coming ahead of time, so we just don't have to deal with it all at the same time of the budget, so.
That's what I figured, yeah. Yeah, I know, I didn't want to drag your evening on any longer, but I figured just get this out of the way and move on.
That's good. Mark?
Yeah, I just need to unfortunately go back. I apologize to people at home, because I get note messages, don't text when you're on, and don't be on your phone when you're on the Select Board. I got a text from somebody who's on the Long Meadow Days Committee, "May 16th is Long Meadow Days", which means that we've already got a strain on our police department, a lot of traffic in the middle of town. But they have, Long Meadow Days is May 16th.
Yeah, 16th and 7th.
So, May 16th and 7th.
So you might want to talk to the police chief about that?
You know, I don't know how we're going to deal with needing three police officers at the ball fields and police officers. And again, you know, I.
Well, they might have to contract the Sheriff's Department or something. But again, that was my concern, because my days of experience with my daughter and the jamboree at Wolf Swamp, it always seemed that was the problem. It was Long Meadow Days was running parallel to that. But the jamboree was out on the Wolf Swamp Field, so we're out by the, you know, East Long Meadow line.
Right.
Way away from the center. This, unfortunately, you know, you have William Street merging right into.
Well, it's also, you know, if we're saying we need extra police details, you know, we need to take, whatever it is, there's DPW, there's all kinds of issues if it's, Long Meadow Days takes.
Yeah, I mean, this is funny, because this is, this is.
I just wanted to make that.
Yeah.
No, you're right, Mark, this is exactly like a site and design process the Planning Board would do. You have to, you have to incorporate DPW, fire, police. Yeah, this is a, it's a rather large, a large event. I mean, this is like having a fair, and literally, we consider one of our, you know, the center of town.
People are going to think we're a happening town with two events.
Yeah, that's right.
Two, five, and the center.
People won't, people won't know what to do.
They won't know what to do.
So Lynn, you'll, you'll check with the department heads and get back to us for Monday, so we'll know. Thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you all, thank you.
Alright, so let's go back, let's see. Problem with this is, I opened windows, oh, here we go, I got back to it. So let's go, everything that we missed. Why don't we go to draft minutes? Is there anyone who's going to, it's for draft minutes for the regular Select Board meeting?
Yeah, I'll move, we approve the minutes from the February 3rd, 2020, regular meeting of the Select Board.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, let's go to the Board, Committee Appointments. I'm looking for appointment for Conservation Commission, a motion.
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
Here, I'll show it to Richard.
He's better on the names, isn't he?
Yeah, I just want to, oh, I got it, hold on. Okay, I just want to open it up. Yeah, I'll move, we approve Kieran Mulcahy for a one-year associate term for the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Parks and Rec Commission?
I move, we approve Craig Perkelski for the three-year term for the Parks and Recreation Commission that expires June of 2020.
Second.
Discussion?
Wait, is that, yeah, it's the completion of a term that expires this June. You're right.
Discussion, all those in favor? Alright, and we have.
Senior Planning Housing Task Force, I'd like to move that we approve, we appoint all six of the applicants to the Senior Housing Task Force.
Second.
So.
Discussion.
Any discussion on that?
Well, there's four, are we going to expand?
We're going to expand it.
Oh, okay.
Couple of these people, well, I know, like, you know, may fall into a couple of categories, Tom.
Yeah.
So, and I thought that that may make some sense to, let them do some overlap, it's tough to.
And it turned out to be a lot more interest by some very dedicated professional people.
Had it been eight people, I think we would have had to cut it down, but being six.
But six is okay. Yeah, no, that sounds good.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor, it was seconded. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, let's.
Okay with that, then, you go.
And I think the only thing left, I got to get back to the, here we go, agenda, is, I think the only thing we have left is the town manager's report.
Town manager's report. That's true.
That's the highlight of the evening.
Wake up here. Alright, so the MVP Action Grant, the new grant round's opening soon. In follow-up conversations with MVP staff, we were told that some of the items we applied for in the last round were viewed as items the town would need to do, no matter whether they were funded through MVP funding or not. So some of those items weren't, they weren't approved. In considering our next application, I met with Rivermore Energy and several department heads to hear about a possible energy resiliency project opportunity. After the presentation from Rivermore Energy, a decision was made to pursue an MVP grant application for solar resiliency work and an additional application to design and engineer stormwater infrastructure and erosion control work at the Dingle and Dwight Road. That's next to the new DPW facility. That stormwater work will be done with PVPC assistance. The solar resiliency work will be done with Rivermore Energy, and it will be an application to fund the design and engineering of solar arrays at the new adult center, new DPW facility, Long Meadow High School, and the Long Meadow Town Hall Public Safety Campus. The design includes energy storage for these critical facilities to allow them to come online and run for a period of time, somewhere between three and 10 days likely, in the event of a power outage. When power's not needed to run the facilities, the solar generation will be helping to offset our energy costs. Rivermore Energy will be preparing the application. If we receive the grant award, Rivermore will do the design and engineering work. Just in the report, I provided some examples of other communities that had successfully been awarded grants for this very similar work by Rivermore. One is the town of Munson, and the other is the town of Yarmouth. Yarmouth was just approved in the last round that we were not approved in.
Excuse me, Lynn, is there a priority of, you know, we've got listed three or four different locations. Are we going to look at them in total, individually? You know, because some of them, I seem to recall, were kind of marginally, you know, financially viable. And are we going to let the others pull the marginal ones through, or are we just going to go with, you know, the ones that are really financially sound, or?
Do you mean the solar, or the?
The solar.
Okay.
The solar. So you've got, you know, you said the DPW, the adult center, the.
Sure, so to elaborate on why those sites were chosen, one is, it looks like.
The roofs?
Well, they're critical in the event of an emergency and we lose power. Those are critical facilities. The high school operates as the emergency shelter. The new adult center is also going to be outfitted to be an emergency shelter. Obviously, police and fire, you need them to come back online. And then the new DPW facility, because usually it's weather-related and we need them to clear the roads. And those are new facilities, so it makes sense to consider it as we're constructing. Your piece about the solar generation, so yes, what we're doing is putting forward four, knowing that.
So there are four separate?
Yes.
Okay.
But knowing that potentially one MVP may come back to us and say, okay, we can't do all of this, which is your least likely that you'd want to go forward with. And we feel at this point, without having done any studies yet, it would be the, the least likely would be Town Hall Public Safety Campus, which is not enough roof space there, the generation wouldn't be that great. But we don't know that yet. But we're going to put them in, because if they'll fund it, then we want to study it. Is that answering your question?
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure that we weren't going to lump them all in together, because, like I said, if one of them, financially a marginal project, you know, maybe we're better off just spending the money on the ones that really do work. But I understand the importance of the high school, the, you know, the DPW, those kinds of things. Thank you.
So moving on in the report here, cable license negotiations, the Cable Advisory Committee is actively meeting right now. They're hoping to conclude negotiations on the next license very soon. The license expires June of 2021. There are 4,967 cable subscribers in Long Meadow, which is down from 5,400 households that had previously subscribed. So I'll report back to you over the next few months on how those negotiations are going.
I hope they do something, because people are dropping off.
But remember, they can't negotiate rates.
Right.
They can only negotiate service.
Services, yeah, but they could give us more channels or something?
Well, they, no, not even that. They negotiate for the town, it's.
It's just rates.
So I got a, if I could, I got a letter from a town resident who questioned their billing line on their cable bill. It said franchise fee. That went up several months in a row. And I sent the note to Dr. Steve Wolman, who's the chair of our Cable Advisory Committee, and he said, I don't know, but I'll ask for some, Comcast, who's the rep. And it turns out, they said, we'll come to the next Comcast meeting, which I did. And the answer, short answer was, and I'm going to say this on here, Comcast rep didn't know either. And, you know, they said, well, if we get the, you know, account number and all, we'll really look into it. So I actually asked the resident, got the account number, and sent them that one, sent them mine, and Dr. Wolman sent them theirs. And we still haven't heard back from them, it's been like two or three weeks. And so Comcast hasn't been, you know, the best response to some of the things we've been doing. And I could sense a frustration in the Cable Committee about the negotiations.
Richard?
Yeah. Do you have any idea what they're doing? Are they going to DirecTV, or these customers is this?
Oh, I don't have that information, but.
That's quite a drop.
I think.
That's like 10%.
They're doing the, they're going to internet, and then Hulu, and Disney Plus, and Amazon, and all that stuff.
Yeah, Hulu, I understand.
Well, so they're non-cable systems, they're streaming systems.
You can get a antenna and just get basic digital.
But you're talking, that's internet service, and they're not dropping off, but this is.
No, this is only cable TV.
This is just cable, okay.
We only negotiate the cable part, not the internet part. The internet part is a different setup for Comcast, and has no regulation, is what I was told.
Still, it's a pretty sizable decrease.
Yeah. I think it's a trend you're seeing nationwide, though. Yeah, but it does end up impacting our subscriber fees that we get. I mean, it's like, not a ton of money, but still, it is revenue that we're losing. Do you, are you ready for me to move on? North Interceptor sewer replacement project, the engineering design. The contract for the second phase work, Phase 1A, was signed last week. This is the second phase of the project after planning study for the replacement and/or relocation of the North Interceptor was completed. The previous planning study recommended that the elevated section of the exposed gravity sewer be relocated into the backyards via proposed easements of the properties adjacent to the current easement. This current project includes the design permitting, bidding, construction, and easement support engineering services for the Phase 1A North Interceptor sewer replacement. $800,000 was authorized for this project at the spring 2019 Annual Town Meeting. The engineering work will also include closed circuit television, inspection of the cross-country gravity sewer mains along the North Interceptor from Western Drive to Emerson Road. The CCTV work will add to the CCTV work that was completed of all the gravity sewer mains in the road. So we're, I had a recent update on this, and we're expecting some of that easement stuff to hopefully be done in time for this next Springtown meeting.
Great.
Hopefully.
I know that was a difficulty.
Yeah. Wolf Swamp Field Design, for those of you that hadn't seen on the website or on social media, the redesign of the Wolf Swamp Athletic Fields has been prepared and is available on the town's website for review and comment until February 26. Comments can also be emailed to the Director of Parks and Rec, Barry Jarvis. In the spring of 2019, residents voted to borrow 1.541 million for the renovation of Wolf Swamp Athletic Fields. These are the most widely-used athletic fields in town, and they see over 10,000 visitors, 10,000 visitors each year. Members of the general public, as well as youth sports leaders, have attended a series of three publicly posted meetings for the last several months to discuss and develop a design plan that meets the needs of our community. That's the design plan we're asking for public comment on now. And then, as you, most of you all know, Long Meadow News will cease publication on February 20th. So the closure of this newspaper highlights the need for the town to increase availability of information on the town website and to aid in that effort over the next six weeks, 16, it's actually 24. Members of town staff will receive website training, and we're going to be working to better utilize town social media accounts, which include Facebook and Twitter. We'll be using that to share updates and post deadlines and notices. And then later this year, I plan to provide you an update on a website refresh project that I'm hoping to start in July on the current longmeadow.org website.
I want to thank you for that, because I know one of the things, as we were looking for a new town manager, and the residents came, it was Tom's vision group. A lot of times, they were talking about the website and communication, and you really rolled up your sleeves and you immediately dived into the project, which I know is not an easy one, because you have to get the employees, you have to get buy-in, and it's a lot of work. So thank you for everything you're putting into that.
You're welcome.
Richard?
Yeah, after hearing the report, Mark and I were just chit-chatting, we're going to propose, we're going to have a Long Meadow Select Board trivia in here. We're going to say, does anybody know what that landscape, or that prize that's started out?
Oh, oh.
Anybody have the total?
Oh, it was 2.5, wasn't it?
No, it was under $100,000.
Oh, wow, last one I remember was 2.5.
Yeah.
Rick, Mark?
Yeah, Lynn, I have a question for you. This has to do with an issue that a resident keeps bringing up, and you and I have talked about, and that is zoning bylaw enforcement. There was an item in one of the reports that the Zoning Board of Appeals had, you know, if you will, overrode a zoning bylaw. Is that, are they authorized to override very specific bylaws by giving exemptions? Is that within the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
As far as I know, in this case, it is.
I don't think they overrode the bylaw, they overrode the exemption.
They, yes, they created an exception for emergency responder.
Yeah, they classified a vehicle as an exemption, as where the.
Okay, so they classify the vehicle in order to fall within the bylaw, they didn't exempt, they didn't override the bylaw.
That's the way I understood it.
Is that, okay.
Yeah.
That makes a little bit more sense to me, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the report, or any of the other department reports that came through? Thank you. And any other subcommittees or reports anyone wants to make? On Monday, we are having a special meeting. The meeting was set up for us to set up, start work, talking about financial goals for the town. But other things have started piling on. We're going to have the, what was that, it's a lacrosse jamboree, street closure on that day. The Building Committee is also going to join us in the very beginning of that meeting, because we have the delay claims and some possible PCOs coming up. because we have the delay claims and some possible PCOs coming up. And then we will go into a session where we will work on some long-range financial goals for the town and discussion.
We start in standard time, seven?
Seven o'clock standard time, right?
Any executive session?
No, I'm sorry, we will need an executive session.
We will.
Yes, 6:30. And former town council, and he was chair of the charter.
David Motel?
Yeah, he will be here that night to address the charter change for the financial provisions.
Because we're also looking at charter changes and financial policies. So it's goals, financial goals, financial charter change, and financial policies. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you for joining us. We will be, I'll check to make sure LCTV's covering the 24th, which is Monday, but I think they will. And if they are covering it, it will start at seven o'clock, because we'll have the executive session 6:30. Thank you for joining us. Good night.